Thank you. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderman Negracia. Alderman Carter.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Here.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Here.
Alderman Howard.
I hear.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Davis. Hey, guys. Shushies. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Present.
Alderman Kong.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Negracia.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Twenty-five. Present, you have Quorn.
Quorn being present, we want to begin today with prayer. But before we do that, all the women from the thirteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, President, members of the board. I would like to request a moment of silence for Estelle Daly, the passing of Estelle Daly, the dear mother of Hector Revenue Greg Daly and Jerry Kramer. I said many of us that have been around a long time know Estelle because she often accompanied Jerry and Greg to so many functions.
Everywhere.
And I said, and the last time I saw her, I believe, was at a Boulevard Heights meetings, meeting, like in March, and she had something to say, too. And anyway, she passed away Sunday, June twenty-first, and there was a private burial already, and she was a hundred and two.
All right. Everyone, please join us in a moment of silence. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We would dispense with line item three. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, as always, I'd like to have my friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
Welcome, Greg. Thanks for joining us. Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, today, June twenty-sixth. On this day in nineteen eighteen nineteen, the bicycle was patented. And in nineteen seventy-seven, Elvis Presley gave his final concert. But more importantly, this is National Coconut Day, and we're pleased to have the spokesmen, the aldermen from the twenty-third, the head coconut. Thank you.
Welcome, Alderman from the twenty-third. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
Alderman from the twenty-second, recognize on approval of the minute.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minute dated June twenty-third.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
All right. We would dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of video of our informal calendar? Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to take Board Bill number one as amended off the informal, move it to the perfection. I love to put on perfection consent, but we'll put it on perfection.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill number one as amended at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
Also, I would, if I could indulge you and remove Board Bill forty-nine as amended from the perfection informal and move it to the perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill forty-nine as amended. Please place that on the regular perfection calendar also.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Any further bills off of any of our formal calendars? Dispense with line items. Eight through. Eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance establishing processes for police officers to request no-knock search warrants, the review and certification of such requests by the City of St. Louis Division of Police Commissioner and SWAT Commandant Officer, and the execution of such warrants, and the crime, the Division of Police to submit quarterly reports to, quarterly reports regarding its use of no-knock search warrants to the civilian oversight board, the Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Department of, I'm sorry, and the Board of Alderman, and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-six, twenty-twenty, for the five-two-eight North Newstead Avenue area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill seventy-eight, to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill seventy-nine. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the eighteen-hundred through eighteen-oh-eight Washington Boulevard area. Board Bill seventy-four, sponsored by Alderman Negracia, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to Soccer Stadium Redevelopment Plan and the First Amendment to Master Redevelopment Agreement and authorized and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents or as necessary for desirable to to carry out and comply with the intent thereof. The following board bill, board bill was reported out of ways and means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill seventy-one, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance submitted to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis, a proposal to add one new article, Article twenty-seven of the City of St. Louis Charter, which authorized and directs the mayor to enter into a long-term lease for the operation and management of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport, providing that total proceeds, including the payment of airport debt, or at least one-point-seven billion dollars, and creates trust funds to direct the net proceeds of at least one billion dollars to be used for public safety, neighborhood development, job and vocational training, streets, bridges, parks, clean and livable neighborhoods, and city infrastructures, and for providing an election to be held for the voting and on the proposed revision and the manner of voting there, and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance, and contain an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of transportation with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill fifty, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the control of the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer up to four-point-five million dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund in accordance with Section five-one-six-B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport and denture of trust between the city, as grantor, and UMB Bank, N.A., as trustee, and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill sixty-four, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Control of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the Second Amendment to Banking Concession Agreement, AL-two-seven-eight, between the city and U.S. Bank National Association, amended the Banking Concession Agreement, AL-two-seven-eight, as amended. The Second Amendment was approved by the Airport Commission and is attached here to as attachment one, and made a part hereof, and its terms are more fully described in Section one of this ordinance, contain a severability clause and contain an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Elliott from North Market, North Wally, to a point previously vacated by ordinance six-seven-seven-nine, and left and well from North Market, North Wally, two-six-five feet to the point previously vacated by ordinance six-five-two-seven-one in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one-four of Article twenty-one of the Charter, imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in, one, the fifteen-foot-wide alley in City Block nine-six-nine, as bounded by Gamble, Jefferson, Stoddard, and Elliott; two, Stoddard from Jefferson to Elliott; three, the fifteen-foot-wide alley in City Block nine-six-eight, as bounded by Stoddard, Jefferson, Mills, and Elliott, in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one-four of Article twenty-one of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface and subsurface, and surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a twenty-foot-wide east-west alley in City Block nine-four-one, as bounded by Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, Nineteenth Street, Delmar Boulevard, and Twentieth Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one-four of Article twenty-one of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance to amend Section two and three of ordinance six-zero-five-six-one, approved October the eleventh, two thousand, and codified in Chapter eight-one-zero-eight-eight of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to vendors to prohibit persons from offering or permitting the offering of free, for free, any goods, wares, merchandise, flowers, horticulture products, services, food, or beverage regardless of value, or any coupon, certificate, ticket, voucher, or rebate offer regardless of value as inducements or purchase other goods or services, or draw customers to a store, business, website, or other online platform, in order to stimulate sales of goods or services, except in those areas designated as vending districts, and amending the definition of the term vend or vending, and defining the term coupon as such terms used herein. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We would dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the Controller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of, and in consideration of the sum of ten dollars and other good and valuable consideration, a quick claim deed to remise, release, and forever quick claim unto the Board of Elections certain city-owned property located in City Block zero-three-six-two, which property is known in number as eleven-hundred Monroe Street, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-zero-six, and eleven-hundred Madison Street, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-zero-six, in St. Louis City, Missouri. Board Bill seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for forty-five-hundred through forty-five-ten South Kings Highway redevelopment area. Board Bill eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance approving a blighted study and redevelopment plan for forty-three-fourteen Itasca Street redevelopment area. Board Bill nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-six-thirty-three through fifty-six-thirty-seven Botanical Avenue area. Board Bill thirty, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty, for the thirty-six-zero-three Cass Avenue. Board Bill thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty, for fourteen-seventeen through fourteen-thirty-three Tower Grove Avenue area. Board Bill thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty, for the thirty-five-thirty-five through thirty-five-thirty-seven Missouri Avenue area. Board Bill thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the two-eleven through two, I'm sorry, through eight-eleven through eight-seventeen North Kings Highway Boulevard area. Board Bill thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated February the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the fifty-one forty-three Delmar Boulevard area. Board Bill forty, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, an ordinance approving a blighted study for the redevelopment plan for five-zero-seven-eight, five-zero-eight-zero, and five-through-five-zero-nine-zero Delmar Boulevard redevelopment area. Board Bill forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for the three-ten DeBoliver area, DeBoliver Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill fifty-four, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-six, twenty-twenty, for the three-thirty-three-zero-six Washington Boulevard area. Board Bill fifty-six, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance approving a blighted study and redevelopment plan for the forty-six-thirty-five and forty-six-twenty-seven Ridgewood redevelopment area. Board Bill fifty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated April twenty-first, twenty-twenty, for the thirty-nine-nineteen and thirty-nine-twenty Minnesota Avenue area. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose.
Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill fifty-two, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing a supplemental appropriation amended ordinance seven-zero-nine-six-three, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty-twenty, appropriating and setting up for special funds, fund revenues to address projected revenue shortfalls in the general fund for the current fiscal year in the amount of six-million-six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, as herein after the detailed and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to perfect Board Bill number fifty-two.
Move by Alderman from tenth, in a tenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from tenth, please proceed.
This is our annual supplemental bill to the budget, just helping us cover any shortfalls as they come up. With that, I'm open to any discussion. If not, I'll be happy to close.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
Been moved by Alderman from tenth, second about Alderman from twenty-third, that we perfect Board Bill number fifty-two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Board Bill sixty-two, committee sub as amended, sponsored by President Reed, and the following all the persons: Davis, Clark Hubbard, Mohammed, Middlebrook, Hubbard, Bosley, Odenberg, Todd, Alderman Boyd, and Orion. An ordinance codified into law, the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department Use of Force Policy Special Order SO-one-dash-zero-one, issued April sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, to include a ban on officers from using chokehold or stranglehold as a use of force method, a requirement for police officers to use de-escalation tactics when appropriate and possible in place of use for force tactics, to establish a duty to intervene policy, ban no, ban on no-knock warrants, and include a comprehensive reporting requirement, and contain the severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill sixty-three, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to perfect Board Bill sixty-three, committee substitute as amended.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-first, entertain a second on Alderman. Second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill sixty-three is simple in nature. Board Bill sixty-three creates transparency, accountability, and promotes the rethinking of training for law enforcement officers here in the City of St. Louis. This is about simply police reform and taking immediate actions, especially when you think about the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis and the countless of acts of the same pattern that we see throughout our country. Board Bill sixty-three, as it says in his language, is a ban on chokehold police officers. It establishes intervention policy, and it is basically de-escalation tactics for our police officers. Many cities and counties throughout the country have adopted similar legislation. Again, this is just simply about police reform.
I thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-first, Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, before we perfect it, have my name added as a co-sponsor if it's not already on there.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alderman from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had one quick question. If the Alderman from the twenty-first would yield?
Alderman from the twenty-first will yield to the Alderman from the eighth.
Yes.
Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you so much. So, I know that part of this was a registry to keep track of officers with a history of offenses or lawsuits filed against them, and the, if I'm reading, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. Page four, the National Police Misconduct Registry. And this says that if, if a national registry is maintained, then the St. Louis Police Department will comply with that. Was there any discussion as to creating our own registry or keeping track of that for ourself in a, in a public transparent way?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Alderman. So currently, if you read the Police Department's policy on useful force, there is a registry that's already in existence. However, this particular board bill makes it law. So there is, there is a current registry that we have now. But that's, that's part of Police Department policy, not exactly government law.
Got it. Okay.
So this board bill perfects that.
Great. Thank you. And, I'm sorry, and if the, if the sponsors are amenable, I would love to add my name as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add the Alderman from the eighths, and then Alderman from the seventh. Yeah. I'm getting to, we had Alderman from the seventh had his hand up for a while, and then we have the thirteenth. Alderman from the seventh.
Sorry about that, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, the Alderman from the seventh, and I believe the Alderman from the thirteenth.
Yes, I would like my name answered, but if there's no objection, perhaps we, I would move that it be put in bank.
Second.
It's been moved.
Objection.
There's an objection to a bank.
Be sure you put my name on it.
All right. Add Alderman from thirteenth. I'm trying to keep up. And then the Alderman from the fifteenth had her name, her hand up for a while. Alderman from the fifteenth? Okay, got you. So, Madam Clerk, please add Alderman from the fifteenth, Alderman from the ninth, the Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, Alderman from the twenty-second.
At twenty-three.
Alderman from twenty-third, Alderman from the sixth. Did you have a question, or you?
Seventeen, please.
Oh, you want to be added. Add Alderman from the sixth.
Seventeen, please.
The Alderman from the seventeenth, the Alderman from the twentieth.
Tenth is fine, please.
And I think I may have gotten everybody.
Mr. President, I think the Alderman from the eleventh ward is trying to raise our hand, too. You can add the tenth.
Alderman from the eleventh, I don't see you on my screen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The hand raising is not working for everyone today. I don't know what's going on. I'm like over here doing this. But I would like to be added to a co-sponsor as well. I think this is a great move forward. Thank you.
All right.
You can add, please add the Alderman from the tenth also, sir. Thank you.
And Alderman from the tenth, and the Alderman from the first had a question, I believe. Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. If the Alderman from the twenty-first yield, Mr. President?
Alderman from the twenty-first will yield the question to the Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Um, so, the reason why I objected is not because I don't agree with this legislation, but I had some questions I wanted to have answered first. So, a few years ago, when we took over in the Police Department, so the Police Department then went under civil service, and they were under all the rules of civil service. Then, the person who was then the chair of, what was it? Of, of, of the employee city, city, what is the employees' committee? Public employees came back and they did a law that said that our laws applied except for that we yielded, basically, to the handbook and the rules of the Police, the Police Department. So I want to know, in, in passing this, did we look at and compare what was in the Police Department? And are we overriding anything that's in the Police Department specifically? And I, and I can give you the ordinance. If we haven't, I want us to go back and do it because I think we need to get rid of that. Because it lets the Police Department have its own set of rules that does not agree with civil service. And it says in that ordinance, which was passed by the Alderman from the previous Alderman person from the twenty-sixth, that if it was a conflict with our ordinances and, and theirs, that their handbook, that their handbook would be the overriding concern and would be, would be the things that we would have to follow. So did we put a notwithstanding any other ordinance or anything else in that? So, or did we override that?
Uh, no, Alderman, we did not override, in this particular ordinance, in this board bill and hopeful ordinance, there is no particular overriding of any, of any particular policy or rule structure in, in the, in the police handbook. It does have certain, it does have certain, it has certain policies that are only departmental policies, and it makes those policies law. So it actually strengthens the handbook by making their policies that police officers are abid by, is making those particular policies law in this particular board bill. And it's, and it's also in addition to, it's also in addition to HR-seven-one-twenty, and I believe the, the Alderman from the twenty-sixth ward sponsored a courtesy resolution in support, sponsored a resolution in support of that particular House resolution in Congress right now. It's the Justice in Policing Act, twenty-twenty. So, all it does is it takes police conduct, and it creates it into law.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not, so I support what you're doing. I'm saying, we need to also look at the ordinance, and I'll send it to you and the president, that the Alderman, former Alderman person from the twenty-sixth passed because it may weaken our ordinance. So I think we may need to look, go back, and either change that or really just repeal it, is what I think. I don't think that the police handbook should override anything that are the laws of the City of St. Louis. So I'm going to send you the ordinance and the president. And so that's what I wanted to know. I am in support, if I will, I do want my name on it, but I do want you to look at this ordinance and make sure that we're not allowing there to be a loophole that we will later regret.
Absolutely. And I'm all for looking at, looking at pass. Absolutely, and I'm all for looking at, looking at, pass it.
Thank you.
I have no further questions, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the 1st. And Madam Clark, please add the Alderman from the 1st name on the board as co-sponsor. Alderman from the 23rd?
Well, I mean, since the Alderman from the 1st was the only objection, can we go back and re-ask if everybody just wants to do it in bank and make it easier?
Yeah, we can, you can make that motion and...
We'll make a motion, it's in bank.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd?
Second.
Alderman from the 14th?
Yes, I, I would like to say something here. I agree with the Alderman from the 1st, and I really would like to know whether we are in conflict. I brought this question up at one point, and I, it was never really recognized, but I, I think that, you know, many times we forge ahead with making laws, and I just want to make sure that this corresponds with what's in the police, what's in the public personnel thing, and that we, you know, we're doing something that isn't going to come back and bias later on. I mean, I'm not opposed to it for, in the essence of it, but as the Alderman from the 1st said, I think we need to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive way rather than having some confusion later on down the road. And, and I guess we can look at that. May I question the Alderman from the 1st?
Alderman from the 1st will yield the question to the Alderman from the 14th?
I will.
Would this be something we could do in engrossment, is compare that, or would it, would it not be part of our duties?
Um, we can compare it, but we can't change it, but we can point out the conflicts, if that's what you want to do, we can always look at anything in engrossment, so. But I'm, I'm going to send the ordinance to, I guess, our committee and to the President and the Alderman of the 21st Ward. We can also come back and amend his ordinance, or we can repeal the ordinance that the former Alderman of the 26th Ward did. I thought, I thought we shouldn't have done that when we did it, but he did come back, and so that sticks in my mind, because I thought that, I know that down the road, we will have conflicts with what's in the Police Manual and what's in, what we're doing with ordinances. So, we, if you want to look at it, that's not a problem with me. If you want me to, I'll send everybody, I'll send everyone on the board a copy of it, so they can look at it if they want to. And then if you want to bring it up in committee, you will have it, and, you know, we are always free to discuss whatever we want in our committee, okay?
I appreciate that, but I just, you know, we find ourselves in these twists so many times, and did we get a legal opinion on this? Can I ask the sponsor?
Alderman, Alderman from the 14th, we've had this looked at by nearly everybody. We had it looked at by, you know, outside attorneys. We had it looked at by our clerk at the Board of Aldermen. It's been available to our attorney at the Board of Aldermen. City councilors have, you know, had an opportunity to look at it, which is why it generated the response from the Mayor's Office, saying what they are providing and what they're not providing. You know, and then it's, it, you know, you see it, very similar language in bills all across the country.
Oh, I agree, I agree. I just, I have no problem with the bill, the essence and the intent of the bill, it's just, are we going to wind up in some sort of illegal quagmire later on?
No, we're not going to end up in a legal quagmire for adopting this bill and passing in the law some of these, some of these policing standards and requirements, right? What the Alderman from the 1st is referring to is...
I understand, I understand. So, okay, yes, add my name, but we'll look at it, and if, you know, we'll move forward with it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Madam Clark, please add Alderman from the 14th. Any further discussion?
It's my motion.
Oh, oh, yeah, we...
Is my motion still there yet?
It's still there, it's still there. It was moved by Alderman from the 23rd, and I believe it was seconded by...
I think it was 13, Beth.
Seconded by the Alderman from the 13th, that we adopt this in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 19th?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just simply wanted to thank the Alderman from the 1st Ward for bringing that to our attention. And as we know, based on how Congress is looking at this, we will definitely be coming back to amend this bill, and we need to make sure that this topic is definitely looked at thoroughly. And we will be, probably when we come back in session, most of everything will be done on a national level, and then we can come back and amend all those things that are required in order for us to be in concert with the nation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize the close?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you for your leadership and spearheading this board bill. Again, this is about rethinking training for law enforcement officers, and I would like to, just to go off on what the Alderman from the 1st was, was speaking about. The last time that the, the, the last time that the Police Department policy was enacted or was, or was revised was in April of 2014. That was two years, basically, a year after that, we gained control of our Police Department. So, under our city charter, their, their policy cannot go against the laws that's enacted by the Board of Aldermen, from what I'm reading right now in the city charter, just to say. But I would love for your committee to, to look at this further, because I think this is part of an ongoing conversation. With that, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the 21st, seconded by Alderman from the 23rd, that we perfect Board Bill Number 63, Committee Substitute as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Board Bill 1, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Ballmer. Cities annual budget appropriation for the fiscal year begin in July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of $1,116,375,497, which sum is hereby appropriated from revenue and special funds named for the purposes herein after enumerated and contained in emergency clause.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 1?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, move that we perfect Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Alderman from the 10th, please proceed.
We had a very fun round of meetings for Ways and Means. Especially like to thank my, my committee and Paul Payne, Budget Director, going through all this. We initially started out with a potential $35 to $37 million shortfall. And what we looked at the bridge gap were hiring freezes, cuts, reallocating, special funding. As we worked through it, the third quarter returns were a little better than what they expected, and we closed the gap to a little under a $10 million gap in the budget. And things seem to be working out well now, but the danger is as we're going to next year. We, things such as the earnings tax with the COVID, the tax returns aren't due till July 15th, so we actually have no earnings tax returns to work from. It's all estimated at this point. That could change naturally without the Cardinals or the Blues playing, hotels and all the restaurant revenue down from COVID. We were trading on, in a very, very dangerous place. So, the word for the day is fluid as far as the budget as we go into next year. When it came to things we requested, we got a GMT grant to help funding for the firefighter's breathing apparatus. Originally, there was no WARD capital available in the, in the original budget. With, working with Mr. Payne and some brain work by Mr. Oldenburg, we came up with a way of getting $4 million in WARD capital for us to do so, along with the, the $100,000 typically we get from STL Works. We will have things for the Aldermen to do their WARD capital projects with next year. So, with that, I'm open to any discussion, if anyone has any.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, and your staff and members of my committee, in anticipation of this short time we had to deal with the budget, I had Mr. Payne come to our committee, because we're going to have to speed things up in order to get this thing done by the 30th. And speaking to Mr. Payne, this is my 19th budget. This is my most disappointing budget. I am disappointed beyond all means at the things that they have done. I don't want to thank Mr. Payne. I want to say shame on you, Mr. Payne, and shame on you, Mayor Lyda Cruzen, for this budget. I've been, I've read this budget, and a four or five times, this budget goes around the vote of the people. Most of these have been votes that I was here for. We put them out to the people, and we put special monies for things, and then this budget goes around. It takes things like $400,000 to $500,000 for the five city recreation centers. That is just totally ridiculous to me. That is a mean-spirited, tone-deaf budget. It does not in any way reflect, I hope, the values of this Board of Aldermen or the values of this city. In a time when we are really having to look at systemic racism, this budget is systemic racism at its worst. It also says to the voters of the city of St. Louis, we don't care what you do, we'll come right back and go around you. So, the Alderman from the 10th just said, oh, they have nothing in the budget for WARD capital. I was here when we passed that particular piece of legislation, sent it out to the voters. So, a little history about that, because we're supposed to have in WARD capital approximately $8 million. A little history about that is for years, previous white Alder, previous white mayors could not get taxes passed, this tax passed, sales tax. Not only that much of South St. Louis vote for it, vote against it, the South, North St. Louis voted against it 99%. They did not trust the current mayor, the last one, because he had run on a ticket of, the previous mayor had closed Homer G. Phillips, and then Shama was going to open it back up. And then he promptly broke his word, and he broke all ties with the black community pretty much, supporting him. We, we were done. So, we killed this tax over and over and over again, until we got our first black mayor, which is Mayor Freeman Bosley. I'm not a fun fan of sales tax. I didn't vote for it. Our current clerk didn't vote for it. In fact, I believe the Chief of Staff for the mayor didn't vote for it. But it did go out, and it got passed. But it got passed with some very specific promises. And the promises were that the way we set this up is the way it was going to be spent. We said, oh, no, Mayor Bosley, they're going to take this money, or sometimes, no. Well, we were right, but not in a good way. We were right, because they're taking, they're attempting to take part of WARD capital fund, which they should not do. They're attempting to take, like I said, the most mean-spirited racist. I, I just can't even believe what you would do. You would take the $400,000, $500,000, which is spread across five recreation centers at a time when our children don't have anything to do, and you would take that money out and zero it out? But we get right down to Forest Park, which has got under just Mayor Bosley's taxes that he got passed. So, I have been for, since I've come back, I've been gathering all the data, because I had data before. Forest Park has gotten over $40 million under just one of these sales taxes. There are other chunks of money that Forest Park has, but $40 million, but you didn't take any money out of Forest Park. You took the recreation money, and you took the WARD capital money. That's systemic racism. That's a tone-deaf administration that does not hear. So, the first thing you need to know when you're talking about taking the money, if you look at, and I want to just go through this board bill, line by line, how many times they go around the vote of the people. So, if I was the people, I would never, what we need to do is vote her out of office, and me, and anybody else who continues to ask the people to vote for something, and then they do something different. So, I want to start with the first notwithstanding, because they use the word notwithstanding. What that means is, I don't care that you voted one way, I'm going to go around how you voted, and I'm going to do it my own way. And we saw the mayor do that with the police, and go up and go around the Board of Aldermen, and go, not only the Board of Aldermen, went around the state reps and state senators, and went to the Republican administration, because this is a Republican budget I'm looking at here. This is protect Wall Street at the expense of Main Street. This is not help the community. This is when people say, what's wrong with North St. Louis? Why aren't they thriving? These are things that we put in effect to try to help North St. Louis, or to help the vacant building. The mayor's budget goes to all of these things to remove them. So, when you look at, the first thing we need to look at, page 6, of, of, page 29, the first thing it talks about doing is, it says, what line is this? Page 6 of 20, line 13? It says, ordinance 65609, the youth tax demolition was a vote of the people. So, what are we going to do? Notwithstanding it, we're going to take that money and transfer it to the Tax Excess Trust Fund. That's not what it's for. It's for demolition funds. Lord knows, in North St. Louis, we need demolition funds, but that goes away. You go to the next thing, you go to page 10, line 6. When you get to page 10, line 6? Oh, I'm sorry, and I just want to mention again on line 13. Line 13 says, notwithstanding the provisions of Ordinance Number 65609. Ordinance 65609 was a vote of the people. We promised them, this is what we were going to do with the money, then we do something different. I hear all of these commercials on TV talking about Clean Missouri and those Republicans, and look what they're doing. They're overriding the will of the people. When we pass this budget, we will be overriding the will of the people five times. So, we should never put anything out to the vote again. This is why I told Alderman from the 26th, that she better make sure that she has procedures in place, so that if we do get this property tax, which at least is not a sales tax, and that's the only reason I supported it coming out of the board, is because it was a property tax, because they never get passed, I can tell you that, hardly ever, very seldom. And so, they know it's easy to do a sales tax, and it's regressive and hurts four people, so we keep passing those things. But we put all these restrictions of what it's supposed to do with this money, and then we have a budget here that comes out, and absolutely does the opposite. And if, if it was spread across the spectrum, so that we were hitting the Forest Park, if we were hitting the convention center, we were doing the sports stadium, none of those things are touched in this budget. In fact, they're all saved, they're sacred cows. I think all of the people in North St. Louis and people in the Southeast St. Louis, we need to take our houses and move into Forest Park, because we would, then we wouldn't have to live around tall grass, vacant houses, because everything in this budget protects the park at the expense of the people, protects the stadium at the expense of the people, protects the convention center at the expense of the people. And the reason why we're taking the money, you need to understand the reason we're taking this money. The reason why we're taking the money from WARD capital and, and recreation is because we, we're moving it to the major capital improvements. Now, when I first got elected, the major capital improvements was for the large streets. In 1994, we started collecting this tax. So, we used that for paving King's Highway, paving Broadway, paving Chippewa, paving Union, any of the big, large streets, which is not fair to go to WARD capital, that money was used for that. I was shocked when I came back, and I saw that that was a whole different thing that was going on, because I was like, where's the major, where's the major street money? Oh, they had borrowed money against that and was now using that to pay back things. But the things that they're paying back is things that had nothing to do with WARD capital, have nothing to do with recreation. When you look in it, it talks about paying on the stadium debt, paying on the NGA debt, all of this kind of thing, and then taking the money. Again, this is why nobody trusts the city of St. Louis. This is why the voters don't trust the city of St. Louis, because we have a mayor that would do such a thing. And so, you need to know that I've been back and forth with the Budget Director, Paul Payne. I've been writing him stuff, I've been asking him questions, I've been pinning him down, I'm going to pin him down more, because this budget does not have to be this way. I'm going to pin him down more because this budget does not have to be this way. If we're going to pass budgets that we say, okay, something happened and it's unexpected, then everybody ought to be paying, not just a few people. If I saw, I wouldn't like this budget and probably would vote no because I always know the budget to be bloated. But I would understand if it was across the spectrum. But when you only do things against a certain part of town or certain people and you protect the rich and the wealthy at all times and at all expense, this is not a fair budget. This is a Republican budget. So as I was saying, so we first vote, we get with 65609, that's the youth tax. It was for demolition. I can't even understand how anybody in North St. Louis doesn't understand. And South, and I tell you, Southeast St. Louis doesn't understand the need for demolition. It is a health problem. It is becoming a dangerous problem to live next door to all these vacant houses that are becoming vacant and there's nobody tearing them down. So we, we didn't have enough money. This one was sponsored, I think, by Ken Ortman, the Alderman, former Alderman of the ninth. He went back out, he went back out and said, we don't have enough money. We've used up the past ordinance. He suspended, I remember going through this thing, but he got it passed so that we can have more money for demolition than taking the demolition fund. That's wrong. The next thing that we have is Board Bill 23, which was concerning the fire department. Now, that's not a vote of the people, but it's on page 10, line 6. And on page 10, line 6, again, they use that notwithstanding the provisions of a Board Bill 224, which was passed in the automatic session 2019, 2020. I believe that that board bill became an ordinance and it might have been the one that Alderman and Garcia passed. I have them all here. And so again, we go through that notwithstanding. Not come back to the board and say, let's amend, not do anything. Let's just make the board, put it in the budget and don't get it over here in a timely fashion. And then say, we got to get this thing done in a hurry, in a hurry. We got to get this thing done. And then we go ahead and we say notwithstanding. And most people not reading that or not a lawyer may not know what notwithstanding means. But it means going around whatever that board bill says. So here we go again, going around something without coming to the Board of Aldermen and asking them, do we want to change this? The next thing we have is page 11, line 29. You look at page 11, line 29. I'm sorry, page 11, page 11, line 17. I'm sorry. Notwithstanding the provisions of ordinance 62830. What is ordinance 63820? Something passed by Mary Ralston, that's how long it was when I was a new Alder person. And again, it went out there and it charged $2 when you got a building permit. And the reason it added that money, again, about demolition of houses. Because we were, at that time, I was the 24th, we didn't have a lot of demolition. But I did understand the 5th Ward, the 4th Ward and some of the other wards, the 22nd Ward, they needed that money to get rid of these houses. You cannot keep people in communities when all around them is tall weeds, vacant properties. And it's not the people, it's the city that's failing the people. It's the city that's failing the people. When I drive my community and everything is cut except for LRA grass. LRA is breaking the law and it is not forestry because forestry was not meant to cut the grass for LRA. But that had gotten pushed on to them. And so you are, you are subjecting my community to a lower standard than they have. So when you put in here to get rid of, again, a second pot of demolition money, that's mostly in North St. Louis and Northeast, I'm sorry, Southeast St. Louis. And it's a crime and it's terrible. And if you wanted that done, you should have come back and asked us and could we find some other way to do it? And you should go back to the citizens. If we're arguing that the Republican administration and the Republican legislature should not be changing state laws that got put out to the citizens, then that same thing has to be for us. We cannot think that that is all right to continue to change things that went out to the citizens. The next board problem we have in this board bill, number one, is line 20, page 12. Again, with the notwithstanding the provisions, okay? And this again is, let's see what this is. Line 20, page 12, is a crime and nuisance crime property bill. It's ordinance 67193. And it's about crime and nuisance property. Again, why do we want to take the money from that? Why are we taking the money from the things that strengthen the neighborhood? It makes no sense. The next thing we have is page 13, line 3. Page 13, line 3. Again, with the notwithstanding. Notwithstanding ordinance 67193. I'm sorry, so that one we just talked about. I'm sorry, the next one we have is public safety infrastructure. And that's, and that is, what is that? That's notwithstanding 70435. Again, that was, 70435 was put out to the people for a vote. This is the one, I'm sorry, that was sponsored by Alderman Christina Garcia. It was Board Bill 2227 as amended. And it was put out for a vote on April 4th, 17th. We didn't, we didn't even let it get hot good before we overriding the will of the people. What's the point of the will of the people? They don't have a will. The Missouri State Constitution says, the thing that overrides the Missouri State Constitution is the will of the people. All of us get elected by the will of the people. For us to then get in office and continually and to attempt to override, override the will of the people with a notwithstanding and to play crazy and to do it in such an unfair, racist, tone death manner is just ridiculous. Okay, the next thing we have is page 17, line 22. This particularly galls me because my friend, I told him this was going to happen. And this is what happened. As I said before, I was here, we, you couldn't get the, the, the sales tax passed, the first black mayor got it passed. When I see, oh, we got $4 million. This is how they dealt with the Ways and Means Committee. They dealt with the Ways and Means Committee by starting, going for your paycheck. You worked 80 hours. They came and said, we're not going to pay you anything. You said, can we please have 40 hours? They said, okay, we'll give you 40 hours, but you're not getting paid 80. We, we're supposed to have, instead of that $4 million, we're supposed to have $7,468,500 in that account and more. Because what I discovered, because I kept saying, wow, we don't have the same amount of money that we used to have when we first started this. And it's not set up the way it says in our ordinance. Because in our ordinance, our ward capital account is supposed to be in each of our own ward capitals. And, and we're supposed to be, if you have money sitting there, you're supposed to be getting interest. And I found that out when I sat on street department and somebody came to four streets and I said, well, wow, if we got this money, why isn't there interest? And they said, oh, you do have interest, but they weren't giving it to us. So in 2001 or 2, we made them, they had to go back and give us all our past interest. So when I'm looking at this $4 million and I'm looking at, we're supposed to have over $7 million. And then I'm like, well, still, this might be a problem. Then I find out that the street department and the BPS are each taking about $650,000 off of the top and putting in their accounts to do our ward capital improvement. But they're not getting a lot of stuff done. Stuff is sitting for years and years and years. The first thing I heard when I came down, came back down here was I sat next to Alderman Cohen and he talked about how he had been trying to get these trees planted that he had paid for. And many of us have things sitting. I've had my speed hunt there for a couple of years. Many of us have stuff sitting and people say, you have all that money. But yeah, we have all that money because they don't get things done or they lie about or they say, oh, well, it has to be done this way and it does not. And so you're sitting on pots of money that can't get spent because every year we're paying people to do something they're not even doing. We never authorized them to do that. So Mr. Payne told me, oh, well, you know, we have came to that agreement. I said, okay, I was here until 2003. Where did we come to the agreement? He can't find anything in writing because we did not come to that agreement. And if we did, we should have put it in an ordinance so that it can be before us. So they're stealing basically $1, $1.3 million every year off of the top of our ward account that's supposed to go into our ward account. I told him, we're going to have further conversations about that because that should be assessed on if you're getting something done. If you're not getting anything done and we still pay you $1.3 million, we're just paying salaries. That is not what ward capital, that is not what these sales taxes for. The wholesale was that we got the people, we just don't have the money to do the hard cause. Now, every little thing I see is a nip and tuck at the ward money. That's why it's reduced. It was not the original intent. In fact, the good thing is by this time, we were recording the Board of Aldermen. So we actually have records. It's on VCR tape. That's how long ago it was. But I still have them here. This is not what was supposed to be done with the budget. And this is what happens when you have a big turnover and you have bureaucrats that's been in place for a long time. They put misinformation out and nobody knows. The last time Mr. Jacob Long came up with this thing about, oh, they have money. This is when we were still meeting in the chambers and tweeted. And then everybody got up and started talking about how they had been trying to get their projects done. That was them then formating how they were going to steal this money and say, we have to do it for a budget. But if, again, and I'm going to put the chart out. I've been working on the chart. I don't have it typed all the way up. They only do it to things that help the people. They do not do it for anything that's big business. This is a Republican budget. We should not be getting $4 million. We should be getting $7,468 and probably more than that when you take the $1.3 million away from the street department and the BPS. The next thing we have is, let's see here. Page 17, line 22. No, I'm sorry, we just said that. The last thing we have here that I have listed is one that Alderman Kennedy, who is now our clerk passed. And it's almost on the last page of the, okay, which one is that, yeah? On page, I think, 28 or 27 of the budget. The proposed budget. And it, again, notwithstanding ordinance 70850. So if you go pull 70850, you'll know that not only was it sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, but also Alderman Muhammad, Alderman Boyd and Alderman Bacaro. And it was something on behalf of the Public Safety Director to enter into a intergovernmental lease with the Marshall. And it talks about the use and the receipt of the payment. And so they, they made an agreement that that 30% of such funds would go to the general funds and 70% of the funds to a special fund for the purpose of providing funding for the improvement to the city jail facilities, but not limited to security upgrades, facility grounds and other improvement equipments and capital assets. And the reason why is that we have had a problem with what we call the MSI forever. We were under federal direction from Judge Cahill, not only our city jail, which used to be over with the police, but also with MSI so that we would pick people up in the daytime and at night we would let 100 people out because we were in violation of Judge Cahill's order. And while I was the Chair of Public Safety back in 2001, 2, we built the Justice Center. And it's a beautiful center. It's much better than anything. It's still, we don't want people locked up, but it's better. Except for one thing, it's downtown and it has no record, it has no place for the people to be outside. So if you're there for a long time, you're cooped up 22, 23 hours a day. We built for extra space because we were in that lock them up and throw away the key or lock them up for everything era. And what we then turned around and did is we start putting our federal prisoners over there. And we put our prisoners from the City of St. Louis out in the workhouse. And the reason we can't put federal prisoners to the workhouse is because it doesn't fit the standard of federal prisoners. So my question become, if it's not the standard of federal prisoners, how is it the standard for our prisoners? Why do we have a lower standard for our prisoners? And I'm going to tell you, I have not been a closed workhouse person. I have been a compromised person. When the mayor talks about repurposing, she got that from me through her Public Safety Director because I have been working for years. I have this mess house here and we pushed really hard. How is this mess house next to a park and behind a school? And it's because this mess house doesn't have a permit to be there right now, but it had Gary Best and other people that worked for this city cut corners and break the rules. And so it's sitting there, a lockup facility. And I think that's horrible. So I pushed to say, hey, why couldn't we actually have people in the workhouse? And instead of putting them all around in the community, that we will put them out there. How about we fix up the workhouse and we put federal prisoners be there too, not just our prisoners? So how about, we got a lot of people that are locked up who, when they get locked up for over a year, they go out to boonies. They go out to far away, it's hard for their families. And I know this when I was an attorney with the public defender. So my question was, why couldn't we fix up the workhouse and bring some of our people closer to home so their families could see them? But Mr. Payne came before us and so we're talking to him, I'm asking him questions. How many people have been at the workhouse most of the year? Under 100. Under 100. How much money do we spend on the workhouse? $8 million. Under 100. I have almost 100 people. We have 40 houses on Macaple. Two people live in many of them. That's 80 people right there. We spend $8 million to lock people up in a facility that's not good enough for federal people. I want you to know, I have been not with you. I changed my vote. I'm a closed the workhouse people now. Because that's ridiculous that we spend $8 million to lock people up. And we're not spending it in the community. I always did understand your position. And I, a lot of it I agree with. I agree with about the bond, it's ridiculous. It's awful. And in fact, the judges are going around the law now because they are, now they just don't set a bond. And I had a personal issue with this with one of my tenants. I wouldn't spend my money to get my tenants out. And I went and they all started de-chewing themselves when my name came aboard. I spent my money because this young man has never done anything wrong. He's been falsely accused. He was sitting up there from January to April, locked up with no bond. Every time they said it's bond, they moved it. I am now with, shut and close the workhouse. It makes no sense financially for us to spend $8 million to lock up 100 people or less. Now they said, Mr. Payne said to me, well, now it's ballooned to a couple of hundreds. It's ballooned because they're not doing bonds. The Supreme Court told them that was illegal. Now, I know the Supreme Court judge, because when I was a public defender, he was the circuit attorney, Judge Draper. I'm writing, I have sent him a letter and writing more to say that the city courts over in St. Louis are violating people's rights. So how they, now they just don't set a bond, they just keep moving the bond back. That's still a violation. You're supposed to, people are innocent until proven guilty and you're supposed to let them out of here. You're not supposed to lock them up. This is the budget, and I'm getting off track because I just, I cannot believe we spent $8 million. But you're taking the money from recreation, $400,000 for five recreation centers. This is the mayor, the first thing she did when she got in office. She took the money from the crossing guard and only gave them to the Catholic schools and said, well, the public schools, they got money, they can get it someplace else. Thank you, Madam Comptroller, because you put some money back in. I don't know who you are, Madam Mayor, but you do not understand that you represent an entire city. I'm sorry that you're carrying this board bill, Mr. President. Because I am trying to work with you all. I always vote no. I voted 19 times no on the budget. This one is not a no, it's a hell no. I don't know how it comes out of my committee. I have promised you that I would have the hearing and would do whatever. And so I will keep my word, but I will never, ever, ever support something like this. You should be scared to come into North St. Louis, Madam Mayor. They should make sure. I, I think we should come back out to your house and start protesting. We should bring all the protesters who have to live next door to tall grass, vacant buildings, who need their projects done in the wards, the things that BPS has been sitting on. I'm telling you, I've gone through Mayor Vincent Shamo, Mayor Freeman Bosley, Mayor Clarence Harmon, Mayor Francis Slay. The worst, who would have thought that the worst mayor I ever had, who would put the worst budget out ever, would be the first female mayor? This is a awful budget. It is nothing that we should be proud of. And we should not be voting to overturn the will of the people five different times. And it should not have been hidden in the budget so that And it should not have been hidden in the budget so that people who, because I've been busy on other things. Because every week we have, uh, rules and we try to get your board bills out and I call you when your stuff is wrong. So I've been busy, but these last few days to sit and read this, really, I, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Shepherd, uh, the President's, uh, Chief of Staff this morning. I told him, I said, I was up all night screaming and hollering mad and saying, I cannot believe this damn bill. I cannot believe the mayor would send something over here. Because while I'm telling you all the things that they took, I also have a chart to show you how, uh, tourism fund, four million, seven hundred and forty-seven, pursuant to the, uh, the board bill, five, to the ordinance, five, six, two, six, three. We're going to keep that. Convention sports facility trust fund, which is sitting empty, eight million, five, fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, Forest Park, all kinds of money for Forest Park in there. Again, I'm going to meet with Alderman. We're going to have our people start living in Forest Park. Because obviously it doesn't matter where we live in our community. And I'm just, just talking about North St. Louis. Southeast St. Louis has a lot of their problems too. Uh, Forest Park and maintenance fund, two million, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, oh, and six hundred and fifty-eight, six hun- I'm sorry, two million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. You mean out of that maintenance fund, you couldn't have left four hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, recreation centers? Every place I see, they kept every dime of the parks. And again, because I didn't even know about this budget and I'd just been collecting the data, I can tell you what every park has gotten. Forest Park has gotten under one, as I told you, forty-five million dollars. When Lacy Clay was the state senator, he left us allegedly, it was for in perpetuity money for Forest Park. There's three or four other bites of money that Forest Parks gets. This is the park that still refuses to put a basketball court. And I've been, Alderman Bacaro talks about him talking about it, but you can go back and find out that I've been asking why we don't have a basketball court in Forest Park since nineteen ninety-two. Number racism. This mayor has a hashtag behind her already at the arch, arch so white. Her nominations have been white or, uh, anything that's just right around the central quarter. She has shown she does not know North St. Louis exists. And, um, this is a racist budget. This is a budget at the expense of people who need services. These are people who pay their taxes. They don't get tax abatement. And then they go out believing people and vote for stuff. And then we come back in secret and say, notwithstanding the ordinance that people have passed. I am not going to vote for this. I encourage other people not to vote for this. Um, so they have been, uh, scaring us by saying, because I had ways to cut out. Oh, we have to have a, a balanced budget. So the lawyer in me say, well, okay, Paul Payne, where does it say it in the ordinance and the charter? Then he had to go back and say, well, uh, I think it says it in the state law. State law says the state of Missouri has to have a balanced budget. That's what the Constitution says. And then even then, it says, subject to the will of the people, to change the Constitution. It does not say we have to have a balanced budget. I think we should have cut everything. I wanted to change every notwithstanding to subject to the ordinances, especially where they were that the people voted. Um, the President's office said that they have a different way to do it. I'm going to hold their feet to the fire for this. Because I had already last week sent in my amendment. Because I, again, I am opposed to saying notwithstanding. I don't believe we have to have a, a balanced budget. And if we do, they ought to approve it and show it. And the, uh, anybody, Paul Payne has worked for this city for thirty years. So before he was even a budget director. So he should be able to tell me right off the bat if there's something that requires us to have a balanced budget. You are, um, Paul, Mr. Payne, you and I have known each other for a long time. I am embarrassed that you would do something like this. I'm, I hope that when it gets to E and A, that you, that the President and, um, the comptroller will, uh, not go along with this budget and say immediately, we have to change this. We're trying to stay within something that was artificially set because when Vince Shamo was the mayor, the fifteenth ward alderwoman, her name was Geraldine Osborne. Lord, I wish she was here. She knew this budget backwards and forward and she would take Vince Shamo to the cleaners. So he went out to the people, which we didn't understand, and had us change and put this artificial date line so that when we get this budget so late, we're not able to go through it. We're not able to do anything but cut. But I don't, at this point, I would have cut everybody in the mayor's office. She, she would only be in there by herself. I'd have cut, uh, any, uh, half of the police budget. I'd have cut all eight million dollars out of the workhouse at this point because I'm that disappointed in this budget. So with that, I will conclude to say, this is not a good budget. This is a racist. This is a budget against the vote of the people. And I want all the people to remember this because I'm going to paste this every place I can. If the mayor doesn't believe in your vote, if the mayor says, that's okay if you vote one way, we'll go behind your back and change it. You already only gave her thirty-two percent. That's how we do this. She don't give but ten percent. And she will not be the mayor any longer. And I hope to never see a budget like this in all the rest of my career. This is the worst budget ever. And I encourage people to vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman from the first. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and thank you to the members of Ways and Means. I know that you guys worked, uh, hard on this budget during a, a pretty, uh, crazy time. Uh, I, I think that the alderwoman from the first brought up, uh, a lot of good, good points. Uh, a, a budget is ultimately a moral document. Uh, and lately in the city here, we've seen thousands of, of folks marching on City Hall demanding changes to how we do things in the city. And one of those changes that they want to see is closing the workhouse. They've been abundantly clear about this, uh, whether you think that the workhouse is a dilapidated old building or whether you think that it's representational of a larger systemic issue. The people of the city have been clear. The people of my ward have been clear. And I think the people throughout the city have been clear that they don't want to pay for the workhouse anymore. They don't want to spend eight million dollars to house a hundred people. Uh, particularly in light of the, the revenue issues that we have, uh, with this COVID-hit budget. Uh, we know now through the closed the workhouse organizing and discussions amongst, uh, uh, our colleagues that the majority of the Board of Aldermen now has said that they would choose to close the workhouse. Uh, so let's put our money where our mouth is and let's close the workhouse. Uh, and with that, I'd like to introduce Amendment number one to Board Bill number one as amended.
Second.
Second.
Alderman from the, uh, twenty-fourth, does everyone, does everyone have a copy of the amendment number one?
Uh, there, there should be a copy in the drive, uh, Mr. President.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth that we amend the Board Bill number one. Uh, please state the entirety of your amendment.
Uh, sure. So Amendment number one, uh, will, will amend, uh, the budget, uh, beginning on page ninety-two, line nine. Uh, we'll strike out the words and figures, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, would you like me to read the entirety of it, Mr. President?
Is it, is it, yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, it, it will, uh, strike out the words and figures fiscal year twenty twenty-one, Department six, three, two, zero, 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 Fund one, zero, one, zero, Name Corrections MSI. Uh, it'll strike the subtotals of salaries for regular employees, uh, employer social security coverage, employer, employee health insurance, employee retirement plan, employee retirement debt contribution.
Mr. President, point of order.
Uh, Alderman from the sixth, please state your point of order.
Uh, thank you. Is it, if, is it appropriate? I think it's fine for the Alderman from the twenty-fourth to tell us which line to stop on and end. Um, if you, this is like three pages of, of reading. I'm, I'm just curious if he can tell us where to start and stop instead of having to read all of it.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Um, so, uh, it begins on fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one on, uh, page ninety-two, line nine, uh, and ends, uh, at the department total figure of eight million dollars, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And inserts, uh, in lieu thereof, uh, the, the same words that are currently there. The change is that the figure goes to zero dollars. We would not be allocating money to, uh, the Medium Security Institute under institution under this amendment. Uh, it's, it's a, a, a pretty simple amendment. It simply zeroes this out. Uh, I think that the, the people have been quite clear that, uh, they, they don't intend to, uh, continue to pay for this. I think this is the will of the people. Uh, and ultimately, this is, this is going to happen, uh, moving forward. It seems like we've all discussed the fact that this needs to happen and let's, let's do it today.
The move by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, I'm going to take a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
I second it by, uh, the Alderman from, from the ninth. Uh, Alderman from the, uh, twenty-fourth, uh, have you reviewed, um, the city's charter and the board's responsibility? What the board can and cannot do in this case?
Uh, I have, uh, worked with, um, uh, the alderwoman from the twentieth and, uh, with Mr. Payne uh, on this issue as, as well as some other aldermen. Uh, I, I would, uh, uh, defer to, uh, the alderwoman from the twentieth on, uh, that, on those specific questions.
All right. Because, uh, we have the right to reduce the city's, uh, we, we have the right to remove or reduce the budget, right? Uh, we have those powers at the board, barring that we, um, barring that it does not conflict with any state or federal, uh, charter responsibility. And it does not, uh, cause the city of St. Louis to violate any existing contracts, right? So we could not at the board, we, we don't have the power to wipe out a, like, just wipe out a budget line item if the city has a contractual responsibility or a contractual, uh, thing in place that requires it to, to, uh, to, you know, the, you know, that, uh, we have a responsibility to pay, right? Uh, so for this amendment, we'd have to understand that that, that we're not in violation of that. Have you gotten a legal opinion for that?
Uh, so my, my understanding is that, uh, a, a, an administration, uh, excuse me, uh, an administration can't bind further administrations down the road through contracts. And so all of our contracts, uh, with the state and federal government do have a provision in them where, uh, they're, they're contingent on, uh, on future funding and they can't bind future legislation. Uh, so there, there would be provisions in those contracts in the event that we chose not to allocate funds that the contracts would, uh, would ultimately terminate.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, leave it with that because there are a lot of questions. But I wanted to help, you know, help, um, put that in context, uh, context for you. Um, uh, because I'm not sure that this amendment is, is, uh, properly before us. I'm not sure that we can actually do what you're, what you're requiring us to do, what, what you're asking us to do. Not, I'm clear that we are in vi- we would be in violation of, of, of our responsibility and what we actually can do as a board. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just emailed around the section five point one, four point zero, seven, zero of the city charter, uh, that, that does clearly sort of state that we do have the ability to reduce, um, proposed appropriations, uh, with the budget so long as that it does not, except for those payments of principal's interest in the city debt or for meeting any charter ordinance or statutory obligations. Um, and I believe that's to what you're referring to. And, and I would inquire of the Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth will yield a question to the Alderman from the sixteen.
Yes, I will. Alderman, um, I know, I, I know I just sent it and I don't know if you have the ability to have your, the, the, your email in front of you. But I think this is the pertinent section that, that is being discussed here. So I'm curious if you've, uh, read that.
Pulling it up right.
Have a reading of that.
Okay, yes, I, I, I see that, uh, what you sent now.
Yeah. So I, I, I mean, I think that's the, probably the pertinent section of the charter here to which, which we're discussing. And I just, I don't know that we have full legal clarity and would, would not want to, um, be in violation of the city's charter and any responsibilities or obligations that we have, um, as a city and that we'd be taking away with, with this potential amendment. So I did, I just, I, I would ask that we, you know, probably get some clarity around this.
I, I believe, I, I, I believe the, uh, if, if you wanted to inquire from the alderwoman from the twentieth that she be, may be able to shed some more light on this, uh, than, than I could for you. I know that she's looked into this, uh, quite a bit. Uh, I've, I've worked with her on it and I know that she, uh, uh, she has, uh, worked with, uh, lawyers and, uh, and with, uh, the budget director on, on these amendments. Uh, so I think she may be able to answer your questions in a, uh, a better fashion than I can.
Sure, sure. Mr. President, uh, I would inquire upon the alderwoman from the twentieth, please.
Alderman from the twentieth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the sixteenth?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the sixteenth, please, please.
Yes, thank you. Alderman, uh, are you, are you reading the section that I just sent around? And, and do you have a, an interpretation of that or could you speak to that, um, vis a vis the amendment that you're, that's being proposed or in front of us?
Alderman, as you know, uh, municipalities, cities are granted authority by state, uh, in which they reside. We, in the state of Missouri, are granted our authority by the state of Missouri's constitution. And as the Alderman from the twenty-fourth mentioned, uh, our state constitution is very clear on the authority that, that, the authority that municipalities and cities have to encumber future years of debt. And we unfortunately, fortunately, I would argue in this case, cannot encumber future, uh, uh, legislative sessions into, uh, obligations of that, of the kind that is being supposed by the, by the president. I will also say that I have requested all contracts under, through which, you know, that our, uh, workhouse is under. I've reviewed all of them. I believe you have as well. All contracts consist of a thirty-day clause that allows the city to get out of those contracts. There may be other contracts lingering out there. I have requested those of both, um, the workhouse, uh, and other departments. I have received none. I requested of the judge, uh, the contract with the federal government, the voluntary contract that we engage in to house federal prisoners. Unfortunately, I have not received a response to that inquiry, uh, despite it being lingering out there for some time now. So the contracts that I have gotten all contain a thirty-day exit clause. And the beauty of the amendment that the Alderman from the twenty-fourth has just offered is that it's simply a, uh, an amendment that eliminates the budget for the workhouse and does not reallocate it. And that money therefore then goes into the general fund. And if the mayor or whomever determines that we have to finish out any contracts, uh, that we are obligated to do that, we are free to do that because those funds are unencumbered, uh, by this amendment. And we could continue to operate within what would be determined to be legal, uh, uh, obligations on the part of the city of St. Louis. I'm happy to answer any other questions regarding the contracts. I believe all seven contracts were shared with Ways and Means. And I really have to commend the Alderman from the twenty-fourth for introducing the amendment here to the budget that I was, uh, not even able to offer, uh, my colleagues, uh, in the Ways and Means Committee hearing last week.
Certainly. Alderman, do you have, do you have those contracts as, um, exhibits today that we could see?
Uh, I certainly could send them around very, very easily. I'll forward that. I believe you have a copy out of those. Uh, every single one of the contracts that we have that were issued to the Supply Commissioner, uh, have a thirty-day exit clause associated with them.
Right. I mean, I assume that that's fairly standard. I, I still don't think that stops, um, litigation over a contract.
Well, certainly, and there's, uh, you know, we have been sued plenty of times before. Uh, we've certainly been sued related to the, uh, workhouse before. Uh, that would be nothing new and I would be open to that, uh, consideration. But the point really is that the state of Missouri- But the point really is that the state of Missouri is very clear on what cities and municipalities are able to enter within, with contracts. And anybody who's entering in a contract with a city or a municipality within the state has to operate with that. And any provider of services that provides services to a municipality or city within the state of Missouri should be familiar with that state law regarding what we can and cannot encumber ourselves with regards to contracts. I do appreciate this concern. And it's not my intention or anybody's intention to put the city's, city at liability, liability to increase that with regards to lawsuits. And that is again why the funds are not encumbered, we're not moving them to something else. In fact, amendments two and three, which I'll be handling, supposing this amendment passes, will adjust those totals, the totals that we are allocating through this budget to reduce those and essentially put the money that we're saving here just in an unencumbered, unencumbered general fund. And should the mayor feel obligated under some legal, legal, for some legal reason to continue out any contracts that you, you're pointing out to, she is free to do that with a legal justification, of course.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman. Mr. President and colleagues, I, I would just say that I think it's a laudable goal to get to a place where we do have a one-jail system. I think the appropriate time would have been five weeks ago to see these amendments in, in the Ways and Means Committee where it would have been a, an appropriate time to hash out and use the full power of that committee to make sure we, we received all the contracts and all our obligations, the rights and responsibilities associated with the committee. And now I feel that that the budget is in a place where we need to move forward. And I think there's, I think there's also, it's also a touch insulting that there's not an acknowledgement of how far we've come with MSI. How far the administration has worked. That operating budget's cut by 50%. And I think, I think it reflects who we are as a city to say, yeah, let's make a goal statement of when, when we can be safely transferred to a one-city jail. And I believe an amendment process being introduced now is, is a little impulsive and, and negates an ability to, to sit down reasonably and operate through what a one-city jail looks like. Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, particularly with, with this amendment. And I don't think I can support them now.
Alright, thank you. And just for everybody's, everybody, so everyone knows, I'm going down the list of hands raised in order. So Alderman, the Carol.
It's not, no, okay.
From the 23rd.
Yeah, so hang on.
We lost your video.
No, here, okay, there we are. I think it's all there.
There you go.
Okay. One, I, I agree with Alderman, Aldenberg. And then here's the thing. The alderwoman of the 20th ward could have introduced this four or five weeks ago in Ways and Means. Instead, she tried to get it on the last day. We're in a budget time crunch. Kill this budget. It goes back to Ways and Means. And what I guarantee is that $8 million will go in the workhouse. No money will be going for body cameras and, and the $4 million for streets and stuff, which I agree with the alderwoman from the first. I think it's basically sinful that they kept money in Forest Park but took money away from the rec centers. I think it's sinful that, how this is done, but I don't, and I don't like the system the way it is. But if we don't pass a budget in the next, whatever it is, four days, whatever the heck it is, then everything we've worked for, everything that we've worked for will go aside. This budget will pass because it's the way it's set up. It'll pass with the workhouse getting $8 million. It will pass without ward capital. So if you're against your ward capital, vote against the budget. Let's kill it. Let's send it back to Ways and Means. They won't have a meeting in time. I'm upset over how long it took Ways and Means to get us the budget back. The mayor wouldn't schedule a meeting, my understanding, whatever. But we're in a time crunch. Now, can you come back and amend the budget? Yes. And as the president already said that he would, he's agreed with the alderwoman from the first that he would come back and would work on this. But to simply say, let's, let's kill this. Let's all vote against it today. If it's got the workhouse, let's just vote against it, or let's vote this in. Great. Let it go back to Ways and Means. But what you're doing is guaranteeing with this no vote, and you can quote me, you're guaranteeing that the workhouse will get $8 million and none of us will get streets, lighting.
Point of order.
Yes. Make it part of order.
Alderman from the 24th, please state your point of order.
I, I believe the alderman from the 23rd is, is talking about the, the vote on the ultimate budget rather than the vote on this amendment now.
I, I think he's talking about what this amendment would do to the ultimate budget. I think that's what he was saying.
Exactly what I'm saying. This will
Will take it.
This will
Point of order, I think the alderman from the
Alderman, Alderman from the 20th, please state your point of order.
My point of order is that the alderman from the 23rd, I believe, has confused E and A with Ways and Means. The bill wouldn't go back to Ways and Means, it would go back to E and A.
But the alderman, the alderman from the 20th is, is still, he can continue his presentation. Alderman from the 20, 23rd, please just proceed.
Okay, so yes, okay, it goes to E and A. No matter where it goes, no matter where it goes, it will not come back to us in a timely manner to pass this on June the 31st. And on July 1st, the workhouse will have $8 million if that's what you're trying to do. The streets will not be being paved if that's what you're trying to do. The body cameras will not be in effect if that's what you're trying to do. If that's what you're trying to do is kill the budget, put an amendment in today knowing full well that it should have been done five weeks ago. And I'll tell you, I'm not, I'm not happy about it, even close, because you know the rules, at least I hope you know the rules. And when the alderwoman from the 20th says, we've been sued plenty of times, she should know she sued us. So I'm frustrated by the timing that this is being put in. The appropriate time, the alderwoman who sits in Ways and Means could have introduced this five or six weeks ago, trying to introduce something on the last day of Ways and Means. All of this has been an attempt to do nothing but kill the budget. But I will say right now, if we kill the budget, which I will not vote against, if we kill the budget, you are gonna be the ones responsible for making sure that the workhouse gets $8 million and that street, street lighting, spread humps, sidewalks, all that, body cameras, the firefighters, breathing air. That all goes, all that work we did goes by the wayside. The budget that's presented to us will be the one that goes into effect on July 1st, which will include $1 million, $8 million for the workhouse, but nothing for streets. And if that's what you're trying to do, God bless you all, but I'm not gonna vote for this. If you want to do things at proper time, it would have been five weeks ago, or pass the budget and then come back and amend the budget. But to simply make these amendments to kill the budget, that's, that's wonderful. And I'm really glad to see that the alderman of the 24th is doing the work for the 20th because she's not standing out on her own when she actually had the time to do it. I will shut up and listen, but I can't support this.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 14th.
I didn't have my hand up. I don't know what happened. I'm sorry.
Yeah, alright. Alderman from the 6th, your hand was up and then it dropped, but you were the next one earlier. Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise in support of the amendment from the alderman from the 20th. I appreciate the questioning. I think it's important for us to all understand and, and get on the same page. Appreciate the alderman from the 16th comment about creating a timeline to get this done. Unfortunately, we've been trying to get this done for over two years and have not been able to get a commitment from the mayor's office on, on what to do. I think it's, you know, this is a wealth-based pre-child detention program. We have 92 people in the workhouse as of today. There's absolutely no reason that makes sense from a financial standpoint. I think we have the ability legally to do it. And we are just used to not exercising the powers that we have, the discretion that we have here at the board. And so with that, I'll, I'll defer my time. But I, I did wanna mention that this is something that a lot of attorneys have looked at, a lot of people have been working on for quite a while. And then to the point of the alderman from the 23rd, there was a resolution on this issue last session that you did not allow to call for a vote. And so people have been working on this. The alderman from the 20th or 24th, any of us have the ability to introduce amendments on the floor. If you have a problem with that, then maybe we can change the rules next session. But there's nothing done out of line here, and there's still an opportunity for debate and for people to ask questions and make decisions. Thank you.
I would like to
Alderman, hold on, Alderman from the, Alderman from the 25th.
Can, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yeah.
Okay. I, so I initially raised my hand to discuss the broader board bill. But since, you know, we're debating this amendment, you know, I think the alderwoman from the 20th ward makes an excellent point in that, you know, stripping the money from this particular line item does not mean that the administration wouldn't be able to honor commitments. But it does send a, a statement in terms of what our priorities are. Our colleague from the first ward, I think, did a, a good summation in terms of what our, our values should be as a city. I, I, I am so frustrated by this budget. This amendment actually offers a glimmer of hope that we can move the budget in a right direction. And, and honestly and frankly, to my colleague from the 23rd ward, if this budget, you know, doesn't pass and it goes back to the budget that was submitted by the mayor and E and A, that budget is a reflection on them. It's not a reflection on this Board of Aldermen or this body. If people's streets don't get paved, if trees don't get planted, if dumpsters don't get replaced, that would be on them. That's not on this body. We were not the ones that originated this budget. So, so know that and, and speak truth to power, cuz that, that's just not, it, that budget as it was originally conceived, did not come from this body, as you're well aware. So, you know, if this, for whatever reason, you know, fails as a, a budget as a whole here at this Board of Aldermen, what would go into effect is not a reflection of our values as a board. It's a reflection of, you know, E and A and the administration's values, which I, I could not be more disappointed with that budget as it was submitted. I understand, you know, we have a lot of challenges before us with our budget. I commend the chairman from the, the 10th ward who chairs Ways and Means cuz having previously served on Ways and Means, it is not an easy committee when it comes time for the budget. Having back-to-back meetings with department heads all day long is very tedious. And so, and many thanks to my colleagues who are serving on that committee this session. But I do think in terms of this amendment that it is something that we have been discussing for many years now. And it does reflect upon our city and, and our priorities. And I, I just, I really struggle that we have, according to the alderwoman from the 6th ward, 92 people in that facility as of today. And we're still spending $8 million on, you know, less than 100 people to, you know, quote-unquote, house them. That is absurd that we would do that. There are other alternatives that we can work through, and I think this amendment, you know, would help push us in that, that right direction. And so I, I'm going to just state my support for this amendment and look forward to the continued debate.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
I would, first of all, like to thank you, Mr. President and honorable board of all the people. This is a totally, I totally rise in support of this amendment from the 20, from the alderman, from the 24th ward to keep, to keep less than 100 people confined in what I call the poorhouse, because many of those are there because they can't make bond, most of them. If they had, so if they had money, they wouldn't be there. They present no danger whatsoever. And it's unconstitutional in my interpretation, cuz you suppose, it, it says no unreasonable bond. What is a poor person, homeless person, person in poverty, what is reasonable? There is no reasonable in this. We have plenty of room in the Justice Senate. We would just follow the Constitution, which is, they should be out on, they shouldn't be in jail in the first place cuz many of them are there for stealing food, shelter, clothing, medical care, and other things that is a human right. So I rather, and this is a Republican, but as Democrats, we are supposed to be with the people, the poor people and the working-class people. This, keeping working-class and poor people confined just to get them off the street instead of building a poorhouse, if you have to have one until we can get enough support to have a house for every human being, food for every human being, clothing for every human being, and medical care cuz everybody, black and white and every other nationality contributed to making this society, this technological and robotic society and electronically-run society possible. We are now, and so to keep those people now in the workhouse because they don't have jobs, because some of them have mental illness and physical illness. Mental illness means drug addiction, for example. That they should be in the hospital, not in the workhouse getting treatment. The ones who are disabled and can't find work, we should expand social security to make sure that they are taken care of like other disabled people who are on social security. And those who can't find jobs, it is the responsibility of the government. I will use a Democrat Roosevelt, a late President Roosevelt, who had work, a work share program. All that meant is that we need to cut the hours and hire everybody who want to work. So I rather in strong support of stop wasting lives, stop wasting money. And let's be, be Christians. I'm not saying, whatever denomination you are. But my religion says, what you do to the least of thee, you do to him. And I don't know of any part of the Bible that I read from page to page over and over again that says that we are supposed to keep locked up poor people. It says that we are supposed to look out for poor people, then my leader, Jesus Christ, said that he gave away food to the hungry. He cured the, for free. He cured the sick. He, and did other miracles. If he did that, he's telling, uh, and I didn't see him locking up anybody. So I rather in strong support of the history of America with my sister, white sisters and brothers who have taken us from slavery all the way up to today without being, getting paid a penny. And I rather with my sisters and brothers in South St. Louis, especially the east part of South St. Louis and that, that are getting poor services too regardless of their color. And that far as part, most of the people, many of the people there don't even live in the city. They get better treatment than those of us who pay taxes, those of us who vote, those of us who are They get better treatment than those of us who pay taxes, those of us who vote, those of us who are Democrats. I rise up in strong support saying that we need to shut the workhouse down today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All the women from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm not going to belabor a lot of the points that my colleagues already made today. Most have said what I was planning to say. I will say this, though. When we look at the numbers that are published every day or every couple of days on our city website about the number of people that are housed in our two jails that we have in the city, we cannot justify spending $8 million a year more on the workhouse. As of today's numbers, there are 92 people in the workhouse and there are 646 people in CJC. CJC has a capacity of 860, which means that there are 214 vacancies, 214 places to put the 92 people at MSI and save $8 million if we wanted to. With this also, I want to add a caveat to that, though, too. You know, MSI is a debtor's prison for, you know, all intents and purposes. And there has been tremendous work that has been done by the Bail Project over the last few years to decrease the number of people that are sitting in MSI. And what they found is when they bail people out of jail, not with their own money, when they bail them out of jail, 95% of them return to their trial without their court date, without any skin in the game, right? This does not make sense. It is only there to keep poor people incarcerated. And what it does is it hurts our economy in the process. We're taking people out of the job market, sometimes for six, nine, 12, 18 months, when they could be working, when they could be with their families, when they could be, you know, being a part of our community, but instead we're removing them and then expecting, once they get released, to be able to walk right back into a job market when they've had a lapse of employment for over a year. You know, this doesn't make sense. We have had thousands of people out in our streets protesting. And a couple of years ago, yes, the calls were for reform, but the calls aren't for reform anymore. The calls are for a different system. And that different system requires different budget priorities. And it means defunding oppressive systems that have been in place for a long time. We have an opportunity here as a city to put ourselves on the map for the right reasons. We have an opportunity to be a beacon of hope for the rest of the country if we vote today to defund the workhouse. I think that's the face that we need to be putting on St. Louis. And so I rise in support of this. I thank the older woman from the 20th and the Alderman from the 24th for their work on this and the organizers from Close the Workhouse and the Bail Project who have been working tirelessly on this since we launched the campaign to close the workhouse almost three years ago. This is the opportune time to do this. And as the Alderman from the 25th said, if for some reason this budget does not pass and it reverts back to what the mayor put in in the first place, then the mayor needs to be held accountable for that. Because that is not a budget that I think represents the morals and the values of people in our city. People in our city do not want us spending $82,000 per inmate to incarcerate somebody in the workhouse. Think about the things that $82,000 per person could go to impact. That's what we're spending right now with 92 people there and $8 million, $82,000 per person. That could be used in so many better ways in our city that actually prevent crime, that actually build economic security for folks in our city, that actually address all of the institutional racism and oppressive systems that we've had in our city for far too long. So I hope that we will make this statement today as a board, that we are committed to different budget priorities and that we will finally defund the workhouse. Thank you.
Thank you. All the one from the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The board, with the Alderman from the 10th yield, I have some technical questions on just the.
Alderman from the 10th, we yield, or Alderman from the 20th.
I will yield if I'm able to answer them. I don't know how technical I am when it comes to that, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize for not fully knowing the answers to these in advance. But we had a budget, the budget that came before us, as we talked about with the chair or with the budget director, was based on numbers, projections that were put together months ago. And the Ways and Means Committee had several deliberations and then sent recommendations back to the Board of E&amp;A. The Board of E&amp;A then adopted those amendments as we recommended. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the Board of, the budget that the Board of E&amp;A then sent back to the Board had the amendments that were requested by the Ways and Means Committee.
That's correct.
Did the Ways and Means Committee then make any further adjustments or amendments to the Board as presented to the Board of Aldermen by Ways and Means?
No, we did not.
So it was my recollection that we didn't even hear any amendments. We don't need to get into that today, but we didn't, we didn't pass any amendments or changes to the budget subsequent to the Board of E&amp;A passing and delivering a budget to the Board of Aldermen. So my point is that if we don't pass this budget today, it doesn't revert back to a budget that doesn't have ward capital, it doesn't revert back to a budget that doesn't have breathing apparatuses, it doesn't revert back to a budget, a bygone era from months ago that we initially considered before having a set of underlying budget capacity. If we don't pass the budget today, this budget is the same budget that the Board of E&amp;A gave us last week. So this is a formality as far as I'm concerned. This is our only opportunity as a set of checks and balances to have any impact, any further impact on the budget. So that's really what I wanted to describe here. Again, the contracts, I'm happy to read them. I sent them to the clerk to make sure that all my colleagues understand that we enter into contracts necessarily with clawback clauses and with the ability for us to get out of them. We have to. It's our responsibility as a legislative body to oversee future budgets and future encumbrances. And so we cannot and we should not encumber future bodies, legislative bodies, into contracts from, for years moving forward. And so we have the ability to get out of these. I'm happy to read them. The clawback clauses, as was pointed out by my colleague from the 16th ward, pretty standard language, the termination clause at the end of each one of these contracts, pretty much sums up. The city of St. Louis reserves the right to cancel this contract by giving 30 days written notice at the contractor's regular mailing address. That's it. It's pretty clear. It's pretty standard. We have the ability. And again, I really want to point out that we're not encumbering these funds in any other way. We're sending a statement that we as the, want to be a city that is a one-jail city. We have 300,000 residents and we have two jails. City of Dallas, which has, I don't know, six times the population, has one incarceration facility. And the message that we're sending our residents to continue to have two jail facilities is not a reflection of the values that I have as a representative of the city of St. Louis. And I hope it's not a message that my colleagues want to send to the residents of the city of St. Louis that we want to continue funding this. If we have to engage in the payment out of contracts, mayor's free to do that with the amendment that we're, that the Alderman from the 24th has introduced. And I'll further say that this issue is bigger than me, certainly. I'm very small. It's bigger than the Alderman from the 24th. It's bigger than all of us. There have been people marching in the streets for months, for years, for decades, for longer than any of us have really been down here, calling on the closure of this facility. It's a, at this point, a symbol. It's a symbol of oppression and racism. And with this amendment, we can at the very least send a signal to the citizens of the city of St. Louis and to the region and to the nation that we are listening. With that, I urge my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
All the one from the first.
Mr. President and members of the board, if the Alderman from the 10th would yield, because I wanted to follow up with what the older woman from the 20th asked him and I wanted to make sure that I understood what he said.
Certainly. 10th will yield, or the one from the first.
Certainly.
Please.
I heard the older woman, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I heard the older woman from the 20th say that there had been amendments that have been sent over and that the Board of E&amp;A had adopted them. Is that correct?
What we sent our desires to E&amp;A, they came back saying that they would agree to those. We, you know, we asked for the ward capital money and then to get funding for the fire, fires breathing apparatus. Those things were taken care of, was sent back to us. And at that point, for us to approve and send back to them in a timely manner. At that point, the, the only thing we could do at that point would be subtract. We could not add anything. And having to get the budget on to the mayor's desk by July 1st and not having any E&amp;A scheduled, we, you know, didn't want to prolong that. That's a typical situation. We then sent it back to E&amp;A as it was. At that point, we have it before us.
I'm not criticizing. I think you guys did a good job. I think that we got the bill too late. And I think that's done on purpose, so we have a time crunch. My question to you is, so are the changes that you sent to E&amp;A and they said they would adopt, are they reflected in Board Bill number one?
Yes, they are. Board Bill one has amended, has the $4 million ward capital in it. That would be, the breathing apparatus is done through a GMT grant. So.
Right. So they are reflected. So the older one from the 20th is right. We wouldn't go back to the original budget. We would be at the budget that E&amp;A adopted.
I believe that's at the discretion of E&amp;A or the mayor if we send this back.
No, because the budget, what I'm trying to say, the budget before us, Alderman, is the one that has been, is amended. So that's the bill that's before us. So that's what we would be passing out or not passing out is as amended. So she is correct that we do not go back to the original one. That's what I'm trying to make.
I believe this, and I really don't know. I'll be perfectly honest with you, but I believe there's a chance that it could, could go to the original budget. I am not the expert on that. We might have to have some legal representation. So I don't know.
It does not.
I'm deferring to you at this point, but I can't guarantee you that that's the answer from me.
It is the answer because the budget that we're passing is the one that before us. And that's why it says as amended. If we pass it and send it to the mayor, she may not like it, but it is as amended. Here's the next question I have. When did we get this budget?
Approximately five weeks ago. Everyone, well, you would have gotten the book on your desk.
Right.
The same time we all did. We all got the, you know, the large book that we could use for paperweights after we're done with them at the same time.
Okay.
Five to six weeks ago.
A lot of times in board bills, we have what's called a severability clause, which says that if some part of something about the board bill or the ordinance is found illegal or unconstitutional, whatever, that the rest of the bill remains in effect. Do we have a severability clause? And I know we have an emergency clause, but I can't recall seeing a severability clause in this budget.
I don't know. I have to take a peek through it or I can email the city council while we're talking and find out. But I don't have, you caught me off guard. I do not know if this has a severability clause off the top of my head.
Okay. If you would email someone and ask them, because I didn't see it. I read it last night and that was one of the things I wanted to bring up. I have no further questions for you. I do want to make a statement. Okay. Thank you. I do want to say that I was not for this last night, yesterday. I've been lobbying for a long time to be for closing the workhouse. As I said before, I wanted to take a middle ground position. And I still don't think just because we closed it that we can't come back and reuse it. I'm not a person that throws buildings away. I'm a building hugger and we've done a lot of rehab in my, in my family. And so there are plenty of good uses that could be used for the workhouse, including bringing people back that are locked up very far away from their loved ones and maybe putting them there. But that would be after bringing it up to the standards. We should not have a federal standard and a standard that is for local people. And after having one of my tenants sit in that workhouse for three months and still has not been, he's been accused, no hearings, and watching the system, I was appalled. Even with all of that, and even with me going to pay to get him out, and I still want it to be reasonable. I don't think that you can be reasonable with people who don't want to be reasonable. If you want to keep $8 million for the workhouse to be open, but you want to take ward capital money, you want to take recreation money, which we should not be taking away, we should be putting more money. It's embarrassing when I look at the small amount of recreational, and it's not for recreation. It's for capital improvement. It's to fix up the recreation centers. And if you go into many of them, it's embarrassing that we sent our children into this. But we're building a new stadium. We built a new football convention center. We have plenty of money. So if the only way that we get the attention is we got to take $8 million out so that you hear this is not a good budget, this was not something you were going to slip past us, this was not something where you were going to have a lot of money for sports convention centers and parks that have gotten millions and millions and millions of dollars at the expense of neighborhoods, then this is what we have to do. You know, everything that the people want to close the workhouse, I agree with 95% of it already anyway. But I want you to know that the mayor's unwillingness to be reasonable with her budget, to take a look at it with an eye that said, I represent the entire community, not just the wealthy community, is what pushed me over. I was just hoping that, against hope, that there has to be something different that can be done. But you have to have the moral willingness to look, take a good, good long look at yourself, to hear when people keep telling you this is racist, this is so white, this is so classist. But if you don't want to hear it, you don't hear it. I don't think the mayor is hearing it. And that is what's making me go over that last 5%. I was already 95% there anyway. And this is what I want to say. If we do go back to the original budget and we don't get a dime, we can still come back and take that money back. We can still come back and, this is a budget. This is not a document that you cannot change. So we can come back, just like the president had already promised me to do. Maybe if we have, nobody has any money, that would have impetus for 20th Alderman to say, we're going to override whatever veto the mayor does because we have that power. So maybe if we don't get any money and you take the ward capital, we just come back and take it back and we do a budget that reflects the moral authority of the Board of Aldermen. I think we're under much too much pressure for this timeline. As I said, I stayed up last night reading it and going over it and moaning. And this is why you have young people, because I'm such a rules person that I wanted to just stay within the rules. And even though I raise a lot of heck, I feel like a lot of times within the rules, but sometimes you, and they're within the rules. That's why I want to say this amendment is within the rules. This amendment, if we did not, if it was not within the rules, you could not make changes on the floor of the Board of Aldermen. It has not been perfected. This is the perfect time to do it. That's why we have it. Once it comes to my committee, which is rules, then you have already perfected it. And the only way you can then change it, you got to send it back out on the floor and then you have to perfect it. So this is exactly the time. And I would suggest that people are so worried about it, which I'm not because now I'm comfortable. Take all the money so that we can have 20 Aldermen, take all the ward capital money, then we'll have 20 Aldermen that have a reason to be on the same page to change whatever budget that's in there. And then we need to go through this budget and make this a budget that reflects the moral authority of the Board of Aldermen because the mayor's budget does not reflect us. And it's not just about the workhouse. It's about recreation. It's about ward capital. It's about a lot of things that you're doing at the expense of big, large businesses. This is a Republican budget. So I encourage everyone to vote for this amendment. It's a great amendment and I'm late to the party, but glad to be part of the change. And thank you for sponsoring this amendment, Alderman from the 24th.
Alderman from the 23rd, your hand was up, it went down, up, down. Are you, you had it up earlier and then it dropped down a list when it went down and came back up?
I do, actually. I want to, a couple of things and then I have a couple of questions. One, to the answer from the Alderman on the 6th, I was asked from the Alderman of the 9th not to hold a vote. I was asked from the Alderman of the 9th not to hold a vote on that resolution. And I was never asked to have another meeting and I was always open to meetings. So when you sit there and criticize, make sure you talk to the sponsors of the bill who asked me not to hold a vote. Okay, let's start there. The Alderman of the 24th, I'm glad to see you're so concerned. You asked once before about the, if anything needs to be done in the park, Forest Park, please let them know there's plenty of space. I haven't heard back about baseball, so basketball. The, 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 the other thing had to do with that, when we move people over from the minimum to the maximum security. Now we are now putting them in a cell for 23 hours a day. Just want to make that point. But I do have a question and I guess I would ask the president, maybe he knows the answer. If we don't ratify a budget between us and E and A and this, if we make these amendments, my understanding is it would go back to E and A. In a sense, we will not have ratified, I see Alderman Rice knows all the rules. I'm asking the president of the board for clarification. If we don't ratify a budget between us and E and A, does the budget that was originally put together, is that the budget that passes?
The budget that would go into effect in this case, it'd be my opinion that it is the budget that was originally sent over from E and A to the ways and means.
See, and that's my understanding. So I just want everybody to be clear so that if we lose everything and the workhouse is.
And the reason, and the reason that is, is because all of the changes that Ways and Means has put in the budget, we have not take, technically taken up at the board yet, which is what we're doing today.
So at least since I've been on there for 11 years, I just want to state that if everything goes away and the workhouse is funded at eight million dollars, which it will be, that all, you know, that's what's going to happen. Also want to state that if somehow this works out, all those people that do work there will lose their jobs with the city and their pension and all that. I guess we shouldn't care about them. We're going to put people from a minimum security into maximum. They're going to be locked up 23 hours a day. They're not going to be able to go hang out in the gym like they do now. I've been over there plenty of times. There's been plenty of improvements. I'm just cautioning. I'm not going to support this. I support passing the budget with the amendments that we've already made. If you want to come back at a later date and work these in, then I think that's the time to do it. Other than that, I'm, you know what, I'm not going to support this, but I will say that when the workhouse is funded at eight million and everything goes away, it's not my fault. We can blame the mayor. We can blame, and the mayor will say it's not her, it's the budget director. And we could blame E and A and they're going to say, well, this person sets the meetings, I don't, and this one. You know, it'll be a blame game. But what's going to happen if we don't pass this? In my opinion, it's only my opinion, that the budget that was presented to us, and that's always what I was told by the charter on July 1st, that's the budget that will go into effect. Do what you want. I don't want to be the one responsible for killing the budget. And I'm not going to, but I didn't want to address that, and if, if, if the Alderman of the 9th wants to say something different, that's fine. But the answer to the Alderwoman from the 6th, I was asked not to hold a vote. So don't ask people to do something, then set them up. It's the game you play. At least I'm honest. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would the Alderman from the 24th yield for questions?
Alderman from the 24th will yield the questions to the Alderman. Alderman from the 7th, please proceed.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I missed this in your introductory remarks about the amendment. But if your amendment were to pass and we were to remove any funding for MSI from this current budget we're debating. Sorry. Where will the current 92 detainees in the workhouse go?
So my understanding on that is that the vast majority of these folks are being held pre-trial. So the, they should have their, their day in court and either be incarcerated at a different facility or not be incarcerated, depending on the outcome of their, their court case.
So you're, you say your understanding, I mean, I know many of them are pre-trial detainees. I certainly understand that. I mean, do you anticipate, are they going to be released from the workhouse?
I think that a lot of that will depend on what the prosecutor's office, the public defender's office and the judiciary sees fit.
Okay, so I guess from a practical standpoint, what I'm trying to get at here, Alderman, is you got 92 people there and I get it's a historically low population in the workhouse, which is great. Also, I think artificially low in light of COVID-19. But if you defund the facility tomorrow, no one has ordered these detainees to be released, have they?
Not to the best of my knowledge. The, I think the issue there though, is that by, by not allocating these funds, these funds go into the, into general revenue. So that would allow for any winding down that needed to happen.
Okay. Have you talked to the Commissioner of Corrections, Mr. Glass, about this proposal?
My understanding is that.
I'm not asking for your understanding. Have you talked to him?
I personally have not. My understanding is that the Alderwoman from the 20th has been in discussions repeatedly with Mr. Glass for quite some time regarding this.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that Commissioner Glass has consistently said on the record that a bed does not equal a bed. Isn't that right?
I believe you're correct, yes.
And so if we talk about moving these 92 people, and I get we've got some excess capacity in the Justice Center right now. Looks like based on today's date, the Alderwoman from the 15th gave the numbers earlier. There is some extra capacity. But if you're to shift these 92 people over, a bed, as the commissioner has said, a bed does not equal a bed. You've got to separate those that are criminally accused co-defendants. You've got to separate people by gender identity. It's a separate people by gang affiliation. Isn't that right?
Yes. And ultimately, I think that this goes to, I guess, maybe the ultimate disagreement that we may have here amongst, amongst ourselves in who it's, in who we should be incarcerating, period. And this, this, this bill, this amendment doesn't mandate the immediate closure of the workhouse. There would be plenty of time for a winding down period.
Okay. Do you know of the 92 people currently in the workhouse, do you know how many of them are there on ordinance violations?
I believe, let me look here, because I, I believe I had these numbers.
It's zero, I'll just tell you. Have you spoken, so I guess again, I, I understand that we want to get more people out of our jail system and I think getting to one jail is a worthy goal. I think this budget does a lot moving towards that goal. We've slashed tons of jobs from corrections. We've closed certain wings of the workhouse. We've got a historically low population. But I guess no one is able to explain to me how, maybe you can, Alderman, how does closing this building and moving these 92 people over to the Justice Center, how does that not exacerbate our problems in the Justice Center and create an overcrowding situation there?
You know, I, I think that ultimately, like I stated earlier, that this comes down to who we should be incarcerating. And, and what we're, what we're allocating money for is to, to incarcerate, to have the capability to incarcerate more people. I think that society wide, we've looked at, at the role of incarceration, who needs to be incarcerated and who doesn't. You know, Mike Wolf, the former justice, chief justice of the Missouri Supreme Court, I think laid it out quite succinctly when he said that there are two types of criminals. There's criminals that we are annoyed with as a society and criminals that we are terrified of. And the criminals that we're terrified of, we need to be locking them up. The prisoners that we are annoyed with, I mean, over and over, we've seen that there's no advantage to incarcerating people that you're annoyed with as a society.
Okay, so along those lines, have you done any sort of analysis of the 92 people currently in the workhouse? How many would fall into the category of people we're terrified of versus folks that we are annoyed with?
I, I think that the vast majority of the folks in the workhouse are held on misdemeanors pre-trial.
Okay, let's look. Let's check the numbers on that. By today's calculations, there are 30 people being held in the, in any of our jails on misdemeanors. Of the seven, and there's 735 being held for some sort of felony. Now, I don't claim to know what, what offenses these folks are being held on or why. But I just think this is a bit hasty when no one has seen, gone through and actually looked to say, okay, of these 92 people, well, I suspect the prosecutor has, you know, she's worked to get people out of jail from pre-trial detention, especially in light of COVID. And I think actually that was a laudable goal. But has anyone looked, are these 92 people being held pre-trial because they are a danger to some sort of victim or a danger to the community? Do you have any idea?
I mean, I don't have the, a breakdown on specific prisoners, but I can tell you that at the end of the day, if we end the federal contract about housing prisoners, space will not be an issue.
Okay. And then I guess the feds will build a jail or everyone there will go to some other facility, like the county jail where four people died.
I don't think that it's appropriate for the city of St. Louis taxpayer to be subsidizing the federal government.
Okay, let me ask you this. If we close this facility, and this is something I guess I just don't understand and then maybe you can enlighten me, how will closing this facility make the city safe?
I think that ultimately this facility has become a symbol of a much larger issue. And like I stated earlier and my introduction of this amendment, we've seen thousands and thousands of people come out onto the streets and tell us in no uncertain terms that they want this facility closed. And I believe that it's, it's the duty of government to represent our constituency. And that I can't think of an issue that people have been more clear about to me when it comes to my phone calls, my emails, the people that I talk to on the street, that they do not think it's appropriate to be paying the kind of money that they are paying per head in order to have the MSI remain open.
Thank you, Alderman. All right. I have no further questions for you, just a couple of comments. You know, I think probably everybody on this board supports getting to a point where we can have a one jail city. I know the Alderwoman from the 20th spoke to that a little while ago. And I think we're making progress in that direction. I think this budget does something to make progress in that direction by cutting millions of dollars worth of jobs in the corrections department. We've, we've closed, we shuttered portions of this building. And I think in the coming years, we could get there, but I don't understand why we are going to hastily defund a facility, a city building, against the advice of the experts on corrections that the city employs, namely the Corrections Commissioner Dale Glass. And without any sort of plan for where we're going to house the detainees currently in this building, assuming they're not released pre-trial, which they haven't been released yet in light, while we're, while we're in the midst of a global pandemic. So perhaps there's a reason that the judges and the prosecutor have asked to hold these folks pre-trial. I don't know. I don't know what they're charged with, but I would be curious to hear from them. I also think, I know we've got 92 people, I'm still speaking, we've got 92 people in this facility right now. And, you know, that's an artificially low number based on history. You know, on early March, prior to COVID, we shuttered portions of this. Prior to COVID, we had 246 people in this facility, many of whom were released due to the emergency situations and the fear of spreading, you know, this, this virus throughout the jail. As the pandemic hopefully moves on, I mean, I don't see that we're going to maybe, crime doesn't appear to be going down in this city. I don't understand how we're going to keep this historically low jail population as we, as we move into the months, you know, in years where the virus no longer exists. I hope we can keep below jail population, but I don't, based on what I'm seeing on the streets currently, I don't feel very confident in that. I'll continue to support a plan to phase out and close down the workhouse. Trying to do it at a last minute amendment is not something I'm going to support. I think it's disingenuous to just everyone to say, oh, there's only 92 people there, close it down now when we all know that's an artificially low number in light of the current pandemic. So I'm going to vote against this amendment and would urge my colleagues to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you colleagues for entertaining this discussion today. Thank you, Alderman from the 24th for offering the amendment. A few notes I've been taking from comments. So the charter actually says in Article 6, Section 3, speaks to the budget and what happens. I mean, it says, notwithstanding the provisions of Article 4, Section 16, in the event the Board of Aldermen has not finally acted upon said proposed ordinance or ordinances by the start of the fiscal year, the proposed ordinance or ordinances recommended by the Board of Estimative Apportionment or in its absence, the submission by the Budget Director shall be considered to have been approved by the Board of Aldermen. And my understanding is shared with Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Spencer that the, that the Board of E and A has approved those amendments to Board Bill one as it has come back to Ways and Means, that that is the budget that will be going forward, not the original budget that was sent to us, but the one that, that E and A has already had an opportunity to weigh in on. And further, even if that were not the case, though, that, that analysis is shared by other attorneys, by Arch City defenders, who has been working on, and closed the workhouse here for a long time. If it were to go back to E and A for a vote, we already know that the comptroller, Darlene Green, has, is in full support of closing the workhouse. She has been out in front of this issue and she continues to support closing the workhouse. So that's one vote on E and A. If we were to pass this amendment today, I would hope that President Reed, as a representative of our body, would also support this closure. That's two votes on the Board of E and A. And that is enough to continue to move this budget forward with the removal of funding for the workhouse. So as, as an elected official who is elected in his own right and as a member of our body, I would hope that he would continue to uphold our desires as the board if we amend the budget today. A couple of other things I want to touch on. So there are questions about the numbers of folks who are at the MSI and those numbers have been going down. They've been trending significantly down as the Supreme Court of Missouri and as continued lawsuits have shown us that we are improperly holding people pre-trial without bond hearings. So the more we have put bond hearings into place, the, the more the population has decreased at MSI. MSI is a medium security institute. If we're using the terminology that was previously discussed, there should be no people that we are deeply afraid of at the MSI because it is a medium security facility. When the Justice Center was built, it was built to replace the medium security institute. It was never supposed to be a two-jail system. They were supposed to move over. And there is continuing work being done by the police department to move their operations out of the CJC and to continue to offer better bond and bail agreements more quickly so that we are lessening the number of people that even have to go through CJC in the first place. And, and the more that we enforce the Supreme Court's decisions and directives that we offer bonds, that we offer clear bond hearings and analyze people's actual needs and their risks to society as they go forward. We cannot just keep holding people pre-trial. And the numbers, you know, there are no, there are no people currently being held at MSI on ordinance violations. That is true. But 30 people on misdemeanor offenses. So is it, is it really that important? So those, those. So is it, is it really that important to those 30 people? So then that drops us down to 62 people at MSI for $8 million, right? Like we just continue to say, we're spending vastly too much money on each of these people to be there. And this removal of funding here, like my colleagues have also said, allows us to wind down operations to say, hey, we're not funding this any longer, but that doesn't mean that we can't move some of those jobs over to the CJC because the CJC is understaffed as well. So you have trained corrections workers that can be moved over. We can, all we're asking is to accelerate this process. We've been at this for multiple years now. There have been more than 10,000 doors knocked by the Close the Workhouse organization in all of our wards. Every single older person has been approached, has been emailed, has had the ability to weigh in as this goes forward. We've had a resolution. We've had multiple packed hearings. And there are currently people outside City Hall right now demonstrating. And if we were at City Hall, we would be able to hear them as they are, they're standing outside City Hall and demanding that we do this today. There have been 50 meetings at the Deaconess Foundation about this. Both of the, both the current Circuit Attorney and the candidate for Circuit Attorney support closing the workhouse. The comptroller supports closing the workhouse. The workhouse is a site of generational harm. This has been open for so long. And all of the stories that we used to hear about inmate fight clubs being forced by the guards, about moldy food, about roaches, it doesn't matter how much of a shiny pot over it now. That is, it's a shrine to failed institution. It is, it is harm that has been happened. And we're, across the country, we are seeing shrines to generational harm being torn down. And this is our ability to do that to one specific deeply harmful institution in the city of St. Louis. And we have this space at the CJC. There are 200, open 214 open beds at the Justice Center. So that is not, it's not a bed-for-bed comparison. There are, there are more than double the amount of beds necessary at the Justice Center right now if we were to move all of those inmates over. I just, we, we've been over this and we've been over this and we've been over this. And I am grateful for Alderwoman Tyus's support today. I am grateful for all of the support of everyone who's been listening to their constituents, who has been listening to the move towards a different type of justice system. If we have, if we have dangerous people, they should be held. If they are not dangerous, then we should have a system in place to properly release people pre-trial so that they don't lose their entire livelihoods while they're locked up for three or six or nine months awaiting trial. Other cities do this well and we can do it too. And this is our stand. This is a stand today to say, we are going to do things differently in the city of St. Louis and we can lead in this way. So I would encourage all of my fellow colleagues to please support this amendment. Be bold today. Take a risk. Jump out there. This is not putting our ward capital at risk. It only is if our leadership does not have the courage to back us up.
Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As most of you all know, that I'm more programmatic and I don't necessarily look at things with the same way that most do, which is always wanting to do things at the 11th hour and never want to sit down, have a plan, work with, work within the system that is here, and also make sure that we have good outcomes. And so for me, I understand that and I wanted to work. I was happy to see that there was an agreement to cut the budget in half at the workhouse. We also know that at the end of the day, we need a new system. But that has to work in tandem with all the justice entities that have to work with us to make that happen. I have introduced a bill for a vote from the public to close the workhouse. I am very, very interested in having that happen because this has been a problem we've had. We've had people creating narratives that have left out the community as a whole. And I think that's another way to put the pressure on all of our systems from the mayor's office down. If our public votes closing it, there will be no hesitation by anybody, not by the judges or anybody else, to sit down and make this system a better system so that we can make sure that the citizens are not abused in any kind of way, but give them all the tools that they need in order to, first of all, be safe. Because that's another thing that nobody talks about that much. But they need to be safe if they are in one of our systems. And they also need to have the ability to get all types of resources to improve their quality of life. Because most of them, when they do commit a minor crime, it's only because that's the best that they can do at the time. So we need to be working on a parallel process that addresses everything, not just one thing haphazardly. And this is not the time today. This budget is fluid. We also sent a message back to the mayor from the Budget Ways and Means Committee that said, "We are going to look at this budget again in three months because we still have things that need to be done. We need to know what the absolute revenue is. You'll have time to have calculated that from the end of this fiscal year. And we need to make sure that we can do additional amendments and also look at our future." And that's a commitment that we have to make. We have to use additional time in reviewing this budget every quarter because we can't just wait to 30 days before approving a new annual budget. So hopefully, I'll have the opportunity to get this on the ballot so that our public can weigh in on it. And then we'll have an absolute knowledge of who wants the workhouse closed. Because this is for the citizens of St. Louis, the voting citizens of St. Louis. Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the Board. I am going to not support this amendment.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 11th. Alderwoman from the 11th. Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you very much. I rise to speak in favor of this amendment. First, I do want to thank the Chairman, the Ways and Means Chairman and the committee. It's very hard work. It's a lot of hours. It's tedious. So I don't take that work and I don't take it for granted at all. I'm a little concerned just this week that we're turning into the Missouri Legislature because if we don't want to make tough decisions, we just throw it to the voters every time. And then another frustration I have is that we're always shutting down any sort of floor debate or amendments. I mean, why even have, why be elected? Why have this whole legislative process if we can't go through with that? So with those frustrations, my biggest frustration is the crime I see in my ward over and over again. And the police officers I work with closely will even tell you, it's like the definition of insanity. We have a drug problem. We have an opioid problem. And I do feel for these officers who are arresting the same folks over and over again, who really just need help. And probably to make a political statement here, I guess, we probably need to value more diversion courts and we desperately need to do something different than just locking up the same people over and over again. We all know this isn't working. And it's just every day I pass by South Square Park, it is the same people. And it's like, how many, I actually don't blame the officers for not wanting to arrest the same people over and over again. That has to be just incredibly frustrating. We've known now for a while that there is a desire. I don't know the statistics. I don't have a poll in primary. But we've known that there's a desire to close the workhouse. And I feel from talking with my colleagues, or many of you, that in our heart of hearts, we know it's probably the right thing to do. I certainly have listened to everyone's expertise, especially the Alderman from the 7th. He probably has more expertise on this matter than many of us just as a prosecutor. And I don't take this lightly, but we have had time to prepare. And for us to pretend that we're blindsided by this is just disingenuous. We've, this has been an issue before I was even elected. So I think it's time to basically put our money where our mouth is and make this really tough decision. And I would be lying if I didn't say this is really hard for me to stand here and know the concerns, but also know that it's the right thing to do. I feel that, I feel that we really need to have, we've got to do something different. To give the Missouri Legislature credit, many strange bedfellows have come together and worked really hard for meaningful criminal justice reform. Because we talk a lot about the urban and rural divide, but this is something that is desperately needed in all communities across America, urban and rural. And we know what we're doing is not working. I'm the daughter of a former public defender and I've seen this cycle my entire life, so for 35 years now. And I also have family members that struggled with addiction. And what we're doing is not working. And we can't wait for the right leadership in all these different forms. We just have to start taking a stand and doing something differently. I also feel like we just constantly get in a cycle of worrying about ward capital and just some other fears that everyone has. But I can have all the ward capital. It's not going to change the same crime in my ward over and over again that is just caused by these criminal justice cycles. So with that, I support this and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of Amendment 1 as well. And what I was basically gonna say was what my colleague from the 11th just said about people making the assertion that this is just being thrown in front of them. If you remember a year ago in the 2019 legislative session, we had Board, or we had Resolution 205. And that was brought up by the Alderwoman from the 6th and the Alderman from the 23rd. So I just really quickly wanted to address that. We had Board Bill 205 in front of the Public Safety Committee. We had, I believe it was four public testimonies. We asked, I asked actually that it not take a vote after the third one, third meeting, because we wanted to have a public meeting in the evening when people that were not able to get off work during the daytime had an opportunity to speak. At that public hearing, we had hundreds of people show up and speak about not only firsthand knowledge of what it is like to be in the workhouse. One of my constituents gave a very passionate speech about what it is like to actually be in the workhouse for a misdemeanor charge. But we had, we had people from all over the city talking about the conditions of the workhouse and how we need to take that, at the time, $16 million and reinvest that in a new approach to public safety. So again, I want to stand in support of this amendment. But just to clarify what the Alderman from the 23rd said earlier, we did not have a public vote because, or we did not have a vote after the third meeting because we wanted to have an opportunity to have an evening meeting. Right after that evening meeting, we went on recess. And if people remember, we did not come back from recess because of COVID. So we did not have the opportunity to actually have the final vote. And we did not have the opportunity to actually bring it from the floor because as soon as March hit, we were all dealing with the first realms of COVID. So we didn't have public meetings. So that's, I just wanted to address that because it was brought up. But again, I do feel like we've been talking about this, Resolution 205 last year. We had four public meetings. We've had a lot of input. Every one of us has gotten emails, phone calls. We've been to rallies. Right now, Close the Workhouse is in front of City Hall, which was just mentioned. This is a demand of the current crisis that we face with jailing poor people in our city and taking fam, people, taking mothers and fathers away from their families, away from their jobs and away from an ability to take care of themselves. So, so again, I just wanted to touch on that. And I fully support Amendment 1. And I thank the Alderman from the 24th for bringing this up today. And I would hope that my colleagues would also support this and finally listen to the voices of the people in the streets. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been sitting here listening for quite a while. And I thank the Alderman from the 1st for the hard work she did. But I guess I'm looking at, you know, she stayed up all night looking at the budget to try to see how we can pull dollars to help us within our communities. And I keep hearing people talk about the poor people and they talk about, you know, how people are suffering. And so I guess a lot of you all don't live where I live because I'm up at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning with the gunshots. We putting cameras up. They shooting the cameras out. Just like the Alderwoman said that she has opioids, well, I have heroin. And so I have Caucasians coming in my ward and they're intimidating the residents that's within our ward. And so now you tell me, well, we got the poor people and they being treated unfairly. And I agree with the Alderman from the 1st, the judicial system is not fair. We all know this is going on and we know we need to fight that. And I'm for the bell piece because I know that it's people in there that shouldn't be. But I don't know how many of you are in southeast St. Louis or south St. Louis have looked at the movie, the documentary that Doom did called America Divide. So you put these people out on the street, so what are they gonna do? Who's gonna give them a job? Where they gonna live? Half the time, their families won't even deal with them. And so again, you put them back into our communities and we have to deal with this travesty of crime and killing and babies dying. And so it's okay. Everybody think they can tell me as a black woman how I should feel. You can't tell me how I should feel when I'm dealing with seniors, there's prisoners in their own home because they can't come out because of the people that's going down the street and shooting and thinking it's okay. So I don't think that's a mechanism, it's a good idea because my people in my ward, who are seniors that have invested 40 to 50 years in their community are scared to sit on their front porch. The police are distraught because they, it's a revolving door. They putting people, putting them in jail and we letting them right back out. So it's not okay with me. I do support that the, that the workhouse should be closed. I do support that we should not have two jails because the city is not that big. We don't have a population for that. But have you all looked at the neighbors that don't sit out on the front? Have you looked at the seniors that scared to come outside? Have you talked to these people? So I'm sorry. That's not okay with me because I've been fighting this fight for over two years. I didn't have press conferences. I didn't beg and plead. I need help and we drowning. And you tell me about someday I'm defunding the workhouse, excuse my French, and I'm up here dealing with people's lives every day. When I tell my seniors, seniors calling me 60 years old, I'm hitting the floor. So that's not okay with me. And I'm sorry, but I'm just like, I'm tired of everybody speaking for black people. You don't wake up black every morning and you don't hear the cries. I do. You don't see the white people hovering in your community and nodding and falling out. I do. So don't tell me that bull crap that you doing what you think is best for me. You can't do what's best for me because I live and breathe black every day. I know what it is to be a single black mama with three kids on $500 an hour work and trying to take care of them. So don't tell me that you know better than me. You don't know better than me because you're not me. When you get through, you're white and you have privileges that I never will have. And my kids had to fight for their privileges. And that's all I have. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
No, thank you so much for, for your comments, Alderwoman from the 27th, you're in passion, please. Alderwoman from the 5th, your hand was up, down, up, down. And I know you were higher up on the list and it just keeps, I don't know why it keeps dropping, but Alderwoman from the 5th.
It's hard to come behind that because I felt everything that Alderwoman from the 27th was saying. But I rise in opposition to this bill. But I rise in opposition to this bill. We, I mean, it's not the bill, the amendment. We have discussed this time and time again. And although some of us are in support of closing the workhouse, we feel that that's something that we should not do without a feasible plan. But this entire movement has taken on its, you know, it, it's, it's turned into a whole different animal, you know? And I, and I take offense to some of the things that have been said because it's not like we don't get it. We have went above and beyond to address all of the concerns, some of them that we know were sensationalized because people actually went in the workhouse and saw what those conditions were. I mean, but our commissioner, our public safety director have gone above and beyond to address every concern, every complaint that was made. But there's still this moving force of people, some of which are not from our community. They have used these bully tactics to just close the workhouse. They feel that they won't have been successful if the building is not actually closed. They're not paying attention to the correctional standards. We have to abide by when it's, when we have to segregate co-defendants. They don't realize now that we have a COVID problem. So that, that explains some of the numbers. It, it explains a lot of the stuff that we are doing. But what I find most disheartening i- is, is when someone gets up and says that the workhouse is a symbol of racism. First of all, stop toying around with that notion and with that word. You know, to me, in my opinion, symbols of racism or the prison industrial complex, mass incarceration. The workhouse is not that. Symbols of racism or when you get on here and advocate for closing the workhouse, but you vote against healthcare in the worst zip code in the city. You vote no against a grocery store in a food desert. So quit toying around with these issues that you deem are important to you when it's convenient for you. Quit backpedaling on the big issue of everything that's going on. Crime is an issue, you know, you all want to, everybody to leave the workhouse. Okay, during this pandemic, we've had people that they released to keep the numbers down. Over a hundred of those people have gone back to the workhouse. You know, people in my community, where I come from, some of them go check themselves in at the workhouse, do a petty crime to have shelter for the winter. Then they get out and, and they overdose within an inch of their nose from the ground on fentanyl in my community, on my doorstep. So never think that you can advocate harder for my community than me. Now, we want to take a holistic approach and see how we really address what's going on from top to the bottom. Then yes, we do that. I'm all for prison reform. But just this whole, and what was the word used, the workhouse is a shrine. That's BS. It's not a shrine. It's not a shrine for all of this going on in the world. Some of these votes that you all make down here against development in North St. Louis, that's a shrine for a problem that perpetuates every divide in our community. So quit playing with these buzzwords. You may think you have everybody fooled, but my constituents in the fifth ward, they know what's going on and they know the importance. I mean, I honestly don't even support putting this to the voters because you know what will happen? It's what will happen every time. People with the money who want their agenda passed, they'll get out there and they'll tweak the ballot language, language and have it in a way that people really won't know what they're voting for. And if you ask anybody in my community, you mentioned anything about jail, some of them will probably say, no, I don't want to have a jail around, but they know what we need in our community. So we won't continue to be plagued by certain individuals in our community who are smart enough to do things, but not, you know, and it's bigger than just annoying something. They're, they'll smart enough to do certain things, but they won't do the craziest things. But, and this is stuff that we deal with every day, it's on our doorstep. And you know, I just, I don't get it, you know, that you all use all these bully tactics to try to push this movement forward. But it's like, give us a plan, give us time to come up with a plan. We have not been able to come up with a plan. We, we are strapped for money, but do that. But don't just keep, you know, putting all this sensationalized rhetoric out here and having these people bombard us with thousands of emails and, and bully us and tell us, oh, we're going to remember you on election day. Well, remember me, Alderman of the fifth on election day because my constituents know that I vote their interest every day. So I just hope that, you know, my colleagues will understand that, okay, we cannot take this money out the budget right now because if we do, then what? What, we, we cannot just navigate through contracts like they're willy-nilly. And okay, if we release these ninety-two people, all of you all who are supporting this, step up and put them in, drop them right in your ward. Drop them right in your ward if you feel that they are so safe and they are not a threat to society. Put them on your front doorstep because they land on mine every day, whether we fund the workhouse or not. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's ironic to me that whenever we discuss the workhouse, we use a black and white issue. And we say that this affects black people, but it's only white people who are speaking up for the issue. I could tell you this, December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, forty-two thirty-one Red Bud Avenue. That house belongs to a single mother in my ward. She has lived in my ward for the last thirty years. The shooter of that particular house, she shot up her house aiming for somebody else and he got the wrong house and he got bad aim too. When he shot up the house, he shot into the house of a single mother on the forty-two hundred block of Red Bud. Where he's at right now is the workhouse and I want him to stay in the workhouse. Now, if we want to use this to say that, well, we need criminal justice reform, well, criminal justice reform has nothing to do with a physical building. Closing the workhouse is not going to stop young black men and women from getting locked up, getting taken advantage of by police, again, put into a system that's going to affect their lives forever. Mr. President, I would, I ask the alderman for the tenth ward to yield.
Alderman from the tenth ward will yield to question to the alderman from the twenty-first.
Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind putting Board Bill number one as amended only a formal calendar to give us time to get a legit legal opinion?
Well, we've been mulling that one over in my mind. We have meetings called for Monday and for Tuesday. So we have a timeframe to do it. And I'm still mulling that over. So at this point, I, I, I'm thinking, considering it, but I can't answer to that, to that question at this moment. I'm still, still mulling it over. I'm, I'm looking for legal answers. So there's a chance it could happen. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say this, as I'm talking right now, I see a tweet notification from a white person who's telling me that this campaign is led by blacks. If that is not white privilege, I don't know what is. For someone that's not my color to tell me what it feels like to look like me, to live in a city like St. Louis, to represent the ward I represent, to tell me what the issues that affect my people are. That's white privilege. And I'm frightened by of white folks telling me what to feel and how to feel when it comes to the people that I represent. The same community that all you white folks have left abandoned, neglected and disadvantaged for fucking forty years and telling me how to feel. Talking about this is a black issue. Well, if this is a black issue, the thirteen thousand black residents in my ward want to see the workhouse as it is right now. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank, thank you, Alderman. Alderman of the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had wanted to address something that had been brought up a while ago, but I think most of the points that I would like to make have been made by my colleagues. I do support this amendment. I think that addressing crime as well as reforming our criminal justice system is, it's a priority for me and I know it's a priority for all of us on this board. I think a lot of us are eager to see a plan to make that happen. And the absence of a plan to actually close the workhouse, I see, this is my opportunity to help push that discussion forward. I do appreciate the work, you know, of everyone who has been asking good questions, sharing information, despite some of the obstacles that have been thrown in the way of us having meaningful debate on this issue. I guess I would just like to address what I wanted to bring up earlier was the, there's been an issue made of the timing of this discussion. And I think we all know that this discussion has been going on for quite some time. I did watch the Ways and Means Committee hearing. I did see attempts to bring this up and those were shut down. Instead of debate earlier, like I said, I appreciate the debate that we are having now. My colleagues on both sides of this issue raised really good points that, you know, that we should be discussing, we should be, you know, holding town hall meetings. And I think, you know, we're all doing the best we can, given the limited time and resources that we have. But I have to say that a lot of the debate that I saw earlier this, this week and earlier in this meeting, instead of debate, were actually acts of sexism and chauvinism, shutting down my, my female colleagues, undermining, undermining women on this board, suggesting that maybe they don't have the intelligence or the understanding of the rules to engage in this conversation. And, you know, with women as a majority of this board, I just have to say that that strategy is not going to work. We are all elected to serve and these are serious issues that, that we need to address here and I think we all need to vote our conscience on this board. I mean, I trust that all of my colleagues are here because they want to do right by this city. And, you know, and, and I appreciate, like I said, open, honest, respectful debate. And I appreciate everyone who has helped bring these issues to light. Like I said, I, I do think that this is a priority. I feel like this is my way of pushing this, this effort to reform our system. There's a lot to consider here and no one measure is going to reform our entire system. But I, I feel that based on all of the different people that I have heard from on this issue, I, I do support it. Like I said, there were a lot of good comments made earlier. This is not the end of the discussion by any means. And I hope that we will continue to have more debate about how to best serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. With the alderman from the twenty-fourth, you have a question.
Alderman from the twentieth will yield a question to the alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes.
I will, but I believe you was looking for the alderman from the twenty-fourth.
You want the twenty-fourth, all right. Alderman from twenty-fourth will yield a question to the alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. I got kind of confused during the debate as far as how much we're actually funding the workhouse. Can you tell me in this current budget we're debating, how much money is in there to fund the workhouse?
Yes, I'll hold it up right now. It's seven eight million, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Okay, thank you. Can you give me an example of a misdemeanor?
A misdemeanor would be any, any crime that would be punishable by less than one year of incarceration.
Okay, so if somebody broke in my mom's house and they beat her up and maybe they stole a TV, would that be a misdemeanor?
No, that would certainly be a felony.
Okay, so we have, how many people in the workhouse that have misdemeanors right now?
There was, I believe, thirty, thirty-something folks are there on misdemeanor charges.
And you're a lawyer, correct?
Yes.
Have you ever defended somebody in a criminal case?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so can you give me an example of when you, a judge would not allow bail for somebody that committed a misdemeanor?
On a misdemeanor, typically there, there, there will be bail as long as the defendant can afford to bail out. One of the issues that we've had widespread in the state of Missouri is the, the bail amounts that are set. The, the bail is supposed to be set in a way that the defendant can bail out. It's supposed to be an amount to ensure their appearance at trial. It is not an amount to punish a person or to, to make it so that they cannot make bail. It's a balance of the perceived threat to society, should the allegations be true, as well as ensuring that the defendant appears at court in order to defend themselves in the matter.
Okay, so let me do about people who are just an absolute menace. I mean, they, they walk around with guns, they shoot, they scare people. And my alderman from the twenty-seventh said it well. We have seniors that are afraid to come out. I, I'm afraid sometime on my own block for my grandbaby to be out playing because somebody next block over is oftentimes shooting up in the air and just doing random shootings and just creating chaos. And oftentimes, they may not have done something that, that, that rises to a felony, but they're doing things that are disruptive to the neighborhood, that scares people, that intimidate people. You have people that have been there for long, they're longtime residents and they cannot enjoy their home that they paid for. Their quality of life sucks at the end of the day. But these would probably be people that bail should be awarded to them based on conversations that I've had with people on shut, the workhouse. Now, our problem is, I don't care if they ever get bail when they are a menace. When they're impeding on people's quality of life, when my child or my grandchild can't go outside and play because these people are a menace to society, I really don't care if they ever get bail because they need some type of structure. I think that government should be supportive of people who have mental health issues. We should absolutely give them every resource that we can to help them. We should give them training opportunities. But I'll tell you from my life experience being an alderman for seventeen years, I've helped people get jobs. They don't want a job. They want to get paid, but they don't want a job. So what we cannot do is make somebody go to work. We can provide them all the tools and resources, but we can't make them be good people. My biggest concern are people that continue to go to jail over and over again. I had not realized eight, eight million dollars to keep a workhouse. I'm in agreement that that's a lot of money for a hundred people. I'm in absolute agreement with that. However, my biggest concern is what happens when you move everybody over to the Justice Center per se and then there's overcrowding? So what I would really be interested in, I think out of all fairness, what we should have is we should have a real exit point. We should know how long it's going to take to get those hundred people out of the workhouse over to the Justice Center. And just taking money or and defunding it, that's not going to help. You have any idea how long it would take to do that transition, Alderman?
You know, I think that a lot of that would come down to the way that they wanted to make that transition and the, the feeling that the court had on the matter as well. Because there is currently room in CJC for the folks confined now at MSI. There, there additionally could be more room should the city end the federal contract to house prisoners. So there, there is adequate space for us to become a, a city with one, one facility to incarcerate folks. So I think ultimately, in, in, in my estimation, this comes down to a budgetary issue. As you pointed out, we're spending an incredible amount of money to house a relatively small amount of people that could be housed in an existing facility.
Okay, so let me go back. So the transition plan, you saying it depends on who as far as how long it would take them to transition?
So, so I, 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 I believe that Dale Glass, the mayor, the prosecuting attorney's office and the, the circuit judges would work to transition this, 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 these funds would, we are not reallocating the funds. So they would go into general revenue and allow for a wind down period. The specifics on that are not laid out in this amendment. That ultimately is a, is a, a job for the executive branch and the judiciary.
Okay, your amendment is, is totally to take the whole, the whole eight point something million, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that would be effective on July the first. And let's suppose it takes six months to a year to do this transition. How do you pay people to do what they need to do at, at the workhouse?
So the, the money would be allocated by, by the mayor out of the, the general revenue funds for that transition.
So it would have to be reallocated by N A. So you would take the eight point seven six out and then N A would put it back, they will walk it back in. Is that what you're saying?
In order to, to carry out the transition, they would certainly be authorized to use funds from general revenue to, to make that happen. Uh, general revenue to, to make that happen. And I think that, you know, Judge Edwards, uh, Mr. Glass and uh. And uh Mayor Cruzen uh can certainly create a plan that. That gets this job done. Uh, I think that uh they, they, there. May, may need to be some incentivization uh in order to do so because it's, it's always easier to stick with the status quo. But ultimately, when we look at, at the, the budget through the lens of, of uh revenue losses from COVID nineteen. I don't believe that it's fiscally responsible to allocate this much money to house these few people.
Okay, um, I. You know, I worked on a criminal justice coordinating council bill and, and I think that uh the city is moving in the right direction. Um, I think the number of people that was in the workouts a year ago have drastically decreased. Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, um, I am totally in favor of reallocating funds, you know, toward job training, toward uh mental health issues. Like I said. Um, most people want to do the right thing. Absolutely, most people want to do the right thing. But then you have a handful or more than a handful of people that. Just, we can't get to. And I, I want to be sensitive on behalf of my constituents that. People that continue to terrorize our community, even though what they're doing doesn't rise to the level. Uh, of felony per se, that we should really think about how we can manage that behavior. And if going to MSI, there's a way, maybe they don't need to spend a year or something like that, or maybe. There's another program out there that we should look at. But. We have to figure out how to create a quality of life for the people that do do right. I mean, I have so many of my people in my community that have done right every day and they just feel like they're victims. They feel like they're being hostage. Being held hostage in their own community. And nobody's really talking about that. Nobody's really talking about that. You know, the movement is all about. You know, nobody should have bail. And the people that I talked to in my community, they don't understand that. And I think I would be curious to see if it goes before a public vote, you know, what does the community overall say? About whether or not we should close the workhouse. Um, I certainly want to be a partner. You know, in helping the process. Uh, I certainly like the alderman from the first said, you know, there are some people that are in there. Or found themselves in that system and they really shouldn't be there. And I'm glad that she was an advocate for somebody that she knows. Because so many people don't know a Sharon Tyes, all the woman Sharon Tyes that can do what she does. So I just want to be clear. I want to be a partner in the process of making the system better. Um, but. I'm just. Just defunding, just flat out, you know, taking all the money away. That's just very concerning for me. Um, so anyway, I, I appreciate this dialogue and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Um. I'm ex, you know, I'm somebody that always, you know, try to look for the win-win. And I think. You know, the move that the city, the direction the city is moving in is a good direction and we continue to do bad. We can continue to do better. But I want to be kind of careful to just, you know, do a hard stop right now. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alderman from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, with the alderman from the twenty fourth yield.
Alderman from the twenty fourth, we yield to the alderman from the seventeenth.
Absolutely.
Alderman from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Thank you, alderman. I uh, I feel like I'm watching Fox News sometimes and I feel like I'm watching CNN. When I go back and forth between the. The administration and the advocates of closing the workhouse. I uh have received uh over the last year or two, a number of communications from. Uh, those advocating to close the workhouse. And I read through them. I, well, that makes sense. And then I go ahead and I contact the administration. I ask them to provide information for me and to respond and I. They say something and it kind of makes sense. And I feel like I'm going back and forth. And um, uh, there, there are a number of things about uh. And I guess the most recent thing I've received from the advocates of closing the workhouse has been a, a uh rather lengthy. Uh, I wouldn't say lengthy, I, uh, about ten or twelve page uh document that I've read through. It seems like mostly what we're talking, there's a lot of valid issues beyond money, but it's something, it seems like we're focused on the money and the money is tied to the president accounts. And I just get a little confused on all these things. I go back and forth and I can't keep track of the numbers. I got on my other screen here, I'm looking at the, the headcount from today, or I was. Um, and then I uh. Then I was going through the headcounts on here and, and the alderman from the seventh was kind of going through these things. And I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're, you know, how you envision this kind of playing out. So as it stands today, it sounds like we have ninety-two people in MSI. Is that correct? And?
Uh, yes, yes, I, I, the, the number should be right, somewhere right in there, yes.
So kind of getting back to this whole thing about how we would have adequate capacity. Do, do you know, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I never served on a public safety committee and I'm, I'm pretty remote from this issue. Do we have a legal requirement as a city to, you know, if a judge says put so-and-so in jail? Do we have a requirement to provide that jail space for that person? I, by state, is that a state, is that a state mandated requirement?
Uh, so my understanding is that sentencing uh judges uh are, are well aware of the, the total number of. Spaces available for them to uh, to uh send anyone to at any uh. Uh, facility and uh they make their, uh, many of their sentencing decisions uh based on, on that. We do have an obligation to house state detainees. We have no obligation other than a contractual obligation. To house federal detainees. And should we terminate that federal uh contract? Uh, then we could certainly house the state detainees that we are required to by statute under uh at CJC. There would be more than adequate space.
Okay, so just so I, just so I, so I get my arm around these numbers. When we're talking about state, state retainees, so that, those are. Uh, a- a- as I understand it, that's the state of Missouri has statutes that say we as a local government. Have to go ahead and provide jail space for people who are charged with state offenses. Is that correct?
Yes.
That would be felonies, but probably not misdemeanors in most cases?
Uh, it, it would ultimately depend on the circumstances of each individual uh, uh case as to whether the judge. Thought that uh either pre-trial detention or uh post-conviction detention was appropriate. Uh, it certainly happens in misdemeanors. Uh, and there are, there are felonies that uh, that, that uh. People can commit that they never uh spend a, a, a day in jail.
I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is with our current headcount, what are, what are we absolutely required? Uh, you know, by the state to have, have uh maintain, um, because I was reading at some point about the. Pro, pro, hmm, probation violations. Weren't we obligated to provide probation violation uh housing as well?
So again, uh, i- i- if someone was on a, on probation for a, a state. Um, charge, then uh, yes, there, there are different uh probation offices and things of that nature. Should, should someone offend? Uh, while they're on probation, uh, that there's uh. A, a hearing uh to determine whether their probation should be revoked. Uh, at that hearing, should their probation be revoked, then they uh, then they enter uh into incarceration. Uh, right now, there's uh about five hundred thirty-eight people on state charges that we have to hold. Which is two hundred twenty less than CJC's capacity and that includes probation violations. Um, so there's six hundred forty-six people currently in CJC. There's a capacity of eight hundred sixty. And so if we, if we were to terminate the federal contract to house prisoners, we would have more than adequate space at CJC.
Okay, well, see, I guess that's where I get into all this, this misnomer. You're saying that we're going to be saving eight million dollars. If you go ahead and just discontinue the federal contract, let's call it two hundred employees. At ninety dollars a day, and I'm getting that ninety dollars from the doctor. Is that a correct figure? I, I just want to make sure we're all understanding each other. So ninety dollars a day.
So my understanding on the federal contract is that the city of St. Louis actually loses money. Per each prisoner housed under that contract, uh effectively subsidizing the federal government.
Well, at ninety dollars a day. At two hundred people times three sixty-five, that's six point five million. So. Yeah, you know, I'm just trying to under, trying to make sure I understand. And then we have the issue of. A week or so ago, or a couple of weeks ago, I read in the, the Post Dispatch that. Public Safety Director Jimmy Edwards, speaking by video conference at an aldermatic budget hearing, said many of those individuals representing a fraction of. I guess they're talking about three hundred people that were released. And to, because of the COVID vi- uh virus, and I guess so there, so it looks like. There's an additional three hundred people under normal circumstances that, that we would have to be dealing with. Is that? Your interpretation of that article? It, it's, it was in the St. Louis Post Dispatch.
So I, I, I'm not sure where that breakdown would go to as far as uh housed at CJC versus housed at MSI. Uh, but there, there certainly are folks uh that uh may. Ha- may be held uh in, in both of those facilities under more normal circumstances. That are, are, are not being held there currently due to uh the restrictions uh that, that COVID has imposed on facilities of that nature.
Well, I guess what I'm talking, uh, my concern in all this stuff and I, yeah. I am far from an expert in this area. I am not on, I've never served on the public safety committee in all the years that I've been down on the board of aldermen. And I'm sitting here and just trying to make logic out of the numbers and I can't ever. You know, they just don't add up. You, if you go ahead and stop the detainees, you're talking about costing. You, you certainly don't, uh, the, excuse me, if you start, if you void the federal contract. You're going to be losing millions of dollars of revenue, certainly not the full eight million, but it's a very substantial portion. Now, we, we would make. Adding the three hundred people back that were released. And, and the notion that somehow or another these people are like. You know, it says in this article, a- and I, I'm reading the post, so I, you know, it's, take it for what you want. Uh, but they said that in a period of two weeks or so, they had fifty people rearrested. And then he, then our public safety director says among those that were released are accused murderer, a robbery. Uh, carjackers, assault and sexual offenses. You know, I mean, these aren't ordinance violations and what, i- if I'm standing your plan is you're sitting there talking about. Cutting loose a hundred people or so without a real plan for, for putting them away and, you know, what, you know, for, for taking care of them. Are, are we just?
No, no, no. U- u- ultimately, what I'm, what I'm saying is that there is space at CJC to house prisoners that we are required to under state law.
Let, I, I, are you saying then that, so I have this thing here and it's like, I can't keep. It, it says twenty percent, uh, this is according to, I guess, the fellow who runs the uh, our, our um. System, he says, uh, they, they need to maintain a twenty percent vacancy rate. So if you add three hundred people back, you have a twenty percent vacancy rate. You're, you're not going to be able to keep all the city prisoners over there, which then means that you're, we're going to still be having MSI open anyway. And then you're going to be voiding the federal contract, which costs us, uh, you know, depending on what numbers you use, five or six or seven million. I, I just don't understand how this whole thing works financially.
So, so, so essentially.
The, what it reminds me of, this whole discussion. Is when President Obama was running for president, who I voted for, who I thought was a great president. He, he wanted to close Gitmo. And he was going to close Gitmo and eight years later, Gitmo was still open. You know, he was. He was going to go ahead and he was going to pull troops out of Iraq. And, you know, now we're eleven years after he elected. And, and there are still troops in Iraq. It's not that he doesn't want to do it, or he didn't want to do it. And I don't think it's that the mayor doesn't want to go ahead and do something with MSI. It's just that when you get into the situation. And you actually have to deal with it and make really hard decisions, that it's not quite as easy as it was from the outside.
I, I, I certainly agree with that. I think that uh, you know, if it, to, to your points though, uh, in order to uh. Address the overcrowding point, uh, we, we wouldn't even have to terminate all two hundred of that uh, of the federal prisoners. Right now, that federal contract, we get six point five million dollars in. It costs us eight million dollars to operate the workhouse. We're losing a million and a half dollars on it every year. All of those prisoners could be held at CJC, so nobody would have to be cut loose. We can maintain the vacancy rate that you addressed by cutting just a fraction of those federal detainees. Uh, so th- this is, the, the math adds up. Um, you know, there's five hundred thirty-eight.
I'm sorry, alderman, but if you add three hundred people back that are, that we released as a result of COVID, that, that. That will exceed the capacity of, of uh, of this downtown CJC, would it not?
Well, right now, we're, tho- those. We are not maintaining space for those people. The circuit attorney, the public defender's office and the judiciary came together and made those decisions independently.
They were not, those were decisions that were made, not as I understand it from reading the article, those were decisions that were made. Not in an ideal circumstances. Those were decisions that were made to. To accommodate the extraordinary circumstances of, of the pandemic and that if the pandemic passes. That they very well might reverse themselves on those decisions, would they not?
Uh, I, 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 I don't believe that we would be seeing the uh, the judiciary second guess those decisions. Barring some uh, some re-offense by, by uh the defendants.
It sounds like there was. What, fifty out of three hundred? So in a, in a period of two weeks' time, you had a twenty percent.
Well, there, there also hasn't, there hasn't been three hundred people in the workhouse for more than a year.
Rearrest rate. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There, there hasn't been uh three hundred people in the workhouse for more than a year. The MSI population has been. On a steady downward trend uh for, for several years. Um, early June of last year. Was the last time that we had three hundred people uh there. So I, I think that that, that may be kind of a dated number. Uh, in terms of uh the, the, the potential population.
Well, uh, thank you, alderman. I, I. I uh, I appreciate your comments. I, I'm voting against the, the resolution and I. I did get, receive a fair amount of emails on this, so I rather than try to write out a, a very lengthy. Explanation to my constituents have contacted me. I want to just spend a little, a couple of minutes to explain myself and then perhaps I can shoot them a link to this. It's, it's been my view of history that when civil liberties and, and. Criminal justice or public safety come in conflict, it's, it's one of the most difficult. Places or means of dividing, finding that right balance between those two. Um, and particularly, particularly for a free society like we are. Uh, in totalitarian governments, you have tremendously restricted civil liberties. And by and large, your public safety is probably pretty good because y- your civil liberties are so restricted. Um, if we look back at our own history, um, every time. every time our country is felt endangered, there's suddenly a quick review of the level of civil liberties. And we only have to go back to World War II and and see what happened to the Japanese internments. More recently, after nine eleven, what happened to, you know, our civil liberties as a country as a whole, and particularly those who who are profiled, whether they're Islam's or Muslims, who who became under additional scrutiny? So under the best of times and best of circumstances with a homogeneous society, trying to find that balance is incredibly difficult. You overlay that into a a country like ours, it's diverse and has several hundred years of 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 discrimination and and racism. And you try to find that balance, and it's even more difficult, and particularly as it impacts those who have been discriminated against historically. I have served on Public Safety Committee my entire time at the Board of Alderman, and the reason I haven't is because I don't think it's my position to figure out how to find that balance in a city like ours, which has such racial division. I am very proud of the fact that our mayor has selected an African American police chief and an African American Director of Public Safety. I am grateful that Jimmy Edwards, who politically before he was a judge, was in another camp of mine. So I have a long history with Judge Edwards. But he has served admirably on the bench. He received national recognition for his role in alternative sentencing. If we, as a city, have anybody trying to define what the appropriate balance is between civil liberties and and public safety, I can't imagine that we're going to be able to find a more appropriate judge of where to place that balance. And for us over at the Board of Alderman to undermine him in that position and to sit there and say as if he has some sort of ulterior motive to go ahead and keep MSI open is almost unconscionable. I I just find that it's like making an allegation against the guy who spent most of his life trying to do the right thing in this area. So I really, you know, call this, you know, I'm not an expert on it, but call it me making decision based on the credibility of the people involved. And I just have a great deal of respect for Judge Edwards. And I I want to support him in that position. I think the proof of his endeavor is already there. The one thing I think everybody both agrees to, whether you're for the closing the workhouse or the administration, is is that the head counts have gone down dramatically. That's not an indication of good faith. I don't know what is. Reducing a budget from eight million to from 16 million down to eight million is is another thing that that's a I think an indication of what has happened. I just want to say another thing about, you know, this whole thing about public safety and how we allocate resources and things like that. In my ward, we have been very, very fortunate. My ward demographically, 25 or 30 years ago, might have very been similar as as any of the more distressed wards in the city. We had lots of institutional support. One of the things that we did was we began doing special taxing districts, which actually increased the amount that we were spending for security. So we went ahead and we ended up creating special taxes, hiring off-duty police officers, putting additional lighting in, trying to make it safe. And that has largely worked, and it's tracked tremendous amounts of investment. Parts of our city now are struggling, and and one of the biggest deterrents from reinvestment is going to be public safety. And for us to sit down in a part of town that has special taxing districts, half of my ward lives in high-rise buildings that have doormen or somewhat secured parking. They they walk from their secured parking spot to pass their doorman through their secured apartment building, and then they go upstairs. And and they live in a far different environment than some of the neighborhoods and wards in our city that are faced tremendous amounts of of public safety concerns. And I've gotten a lot of emails about this. But through a year, the amount of emails I will get about, even in my ward, which is far safer now than what it was, far lower crime rates than what it used to be 20 or 30 years ago. And and I will get still to this day vastly more emails concerning public safety, police protection, and everything else regarding public safety. And and I will go to one neighborhood meeting, any neighborhood meeting I go to, the dominant conversation is public safety. And for us to suddenly act like we should just strip that or deny some of the struggling neighborhoods the opportunity to go ahead and have that addressed at at the rate and speed in a way that they feel is appropriate for them. I I just don't think that's that's fair. I don't think it's it's reasonable. I I think our city, our city is really challenged, not with the desire to do the right thing. I think everybody down on the board wants to do it. I think all the elected officials I've ever worked with want to do it. But we're really restricted by money. People talk about us wanting to spend money in different ways. We don't have enough money to spend on the police department or security or any of these things, but we don't have enough money to spend on the other things, not that we're not trying to. In 1992, we passed a special tax to support the community mental health, and then created the Mental Health Board. We do library taxes. We do we have the Children's Service Fund. We passed that in 2004. Just a couple of weeks ago, we offered an opportunity to increase that. Two or three years ago, in 2016, we increased our real estate taxes by 20% for the school board so that they could provide early childhood education. My wife's a social worker turned early childhood educator. I absolutely believe in those those uses of money. I've seen them firsthand, what early intervention will do and what social workers can do. It's not that we don't want to do it. We just don't have the tax base to do it. And it's and how do you grow the tax base unless you create a a safe environment? I I I I I don't want to demean or 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 in any way dismiss the hard work that so many people have done to to raise some of the issues at City Jail. And I think in so many ways, they have a wonderful success story to tell. I mean, we've cut eight million dollars. We've reduced the number of people up there. You know, and and they fought City Hall in many ways. They won. They it's just, you know, maybe it's not exactly on the time schedule they wanted. But the, you know, it's working, and they got people's attention, and they are listening. I I just think it's, as a as a white guy who's had a charmed life, who's representing a ward that is in really pretty good shape, I think it's really important for me to to be at the point in my life where I listen. And that's why I've never served on public safety, is is I didn't want to be in a position of trying to go ahead and and find that right balance, because I don't think as a white guy, it really helps that much. I I supported, I was an early supporter of civilian oversight. I supported civilian oversight in 2006. That was eight years before Ferguson, and I supported it because I believed in transparency. But there was also a unified call from the Black Caucus to do that there. At the time, Bill Ba- I went back and checked. It was 17 people voted for that at the Board of Alderman, all 12 members of the Black Caucus. That was vetoed by the mayor, and a subsequent one wasn't passed until after, until after Ferguson. So I more than willing, and and I think this thing would have sailed through if it had the unified support of the Black Caucus. But in anticipation or as a result of the emails that I've received, and I've been slow to respond to them because I've been, it's a very fluid type of issue, and I wanted to know. I have spoken with the Chairman of the Black Caucus. I spoke with the highest elected official in the St. Louis region, which is our President of the Board of Alderman. And I've spoken with several members of the Black Caucus, and it was very clear to me that there was far from unanimity on on within their community about this issue. So at this point, I'd like to say that I stand with Jimmy Edwards. I trust and value his opinion on how to deal with this, and I'm going to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the 19th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I believe that.
Alderman, we can't really hear you that well.
Okay, wait a minute. Is that better?
Yes, yes, perfect.
I, Mr. President, members of the board, I do believe that there's a lot of passion here. I also understand that many people have good intentions. But it's important for us to make sure that we are all working in tandem, and you just don't haphazardly do something. You must have a plan. You must know where the people are going, and we need to plan for a long-term future. I don't want to see folks just locked up. I need to see them put in situations where they can improve their quality of life. Because we have a lot of people who are not hardened criminals, but they will become hardened if you put them in with them, okay? And and that's another bad thing about this. So what I want to do is to ask for the respect of our community, because we're listening to our seniors. We're listening to our families. We're listening to people afraid to walk down the street or sit in their living room or take their children to the park. We we have too many problems other than that occupancy number. So that's one of the issues that comes with this conversation and also coming back to review our budget in the next quarter, when we have better numbers from the revenue that we received from this current year, and also to see how we're trending for this new budget year. It, you know, you got to think about all sides of this, not just one. So I just wanted to say again, if if people could just understand that we need to be more responsible and work on a plan. And I still stand in opposition to this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 10th.
Let me press my right button. Thank you, sir. I I had my hand raised up earlier to there are some of the questions I've been trying to contact legal about. And Article 16, Section 3, what was brought up earlier in in regard to it, it says, the word proposed is in there. As you stated before, if we do not pass a budget, it goes back to the original proposed budget. So if we do not pass this budget, it goes to the original budget that was given to us by the Budget Director before Ways and Means had anything to do with it. So I just wanted to bring that point up. Article 16, Section 3, the key word is proposed. All right, with that, I and the other legal question, I'm still waiting on answers, because if if there's a chance this amendment passes, we could be in break, again, by passing it out with the budget, we could be in violation of the Charter with the earlier Article 5, 14, 070. I haven't got an answer back on that. But with that, that I just wanted to add my comment. Those are questions asked earlier of me as the Chairman of Ways and Means. I wanted to put that back to you, sir.
All right, all right, thank you. So what are you? What are you? Alderman from the 10th.
They muted me, sorry.
So what are you, what are you asking, what are you asking us to?
Well, I know, I wanted to clear those questions up, and at that, I believe we still have the amendment before us. I I have been considering, as was asked me earlier, one of the considerations is to put this on the informal, if we're going to be in violation of the Charter. Because I, we getting the budget out legally is our duty. I just believe, you know, those that that should be brought up to you guys. So in in thinking about these these things at the last minute, it it can take away, if this would pass. It could take away, we could end up with no war capital. We could end up with the original proposed budget if this is finally being violation. Naturally, I would, I'm a very pragmatic person. I like to have things laid out and do things properly. I understand all the emotion tied around closing the workhouse. But I believe that getting our legal budget out and maybe working in a timely manner to find a way to close the workhouse, if it indeed needs to be closed, with a way to where who's going to clothe these people, who's going to feed these people, what's going to happen? Because I believe if this eight-point-whatever-million goes back into the to the general revenue fund, the mayor does not have the authorization just to use it for whatever. She can't just say, I'm going to do this for the workhouse again. She, that wouldn't have to be, again, she just can't take general funds and do whatever she wants with them. Otherwise, you know, there there's no, there's no law. So that is that is my comment on the the article. I just believe that no, we're we're, again, to all the people who have emotions about this, we understand, I understand. But we also have to get a legal budget out, and we also have to make sure we do things in in a fashion that looks out for the people who are in the workhouse and looks out for our citizens. And I believe, I I believe at this time, we do have a meeting called for Monday and Tuesday. I'm hesitant to put this on the informal. I would I believe we, you know, the the other, the other thing we could do is.
Meetings Monday and Tuesday also.
We have meetings, so we have the time to do this.
If you put it on, if you put it on the formal today, we have meetings Monday.
All right, because I, again, if there's a chance this can pass, we could be in violation. And I I if we do have meetings to do this, Monday and Tuesday, we've had all the discussion. It would be a a simple thing, but I I believe we you know, and and if this passes, and I, because I don't know, I if there's a chance it can, then we could, you know, be in violation of 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 a charter and not getting a a budget out and ending up with the proposed budget.
Okay, so what do you, what do you, what do you? I guess, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm I'm going to request you, Mr. President, that we we put Board Bill 1 as amended on the informal budget.
On the informal calendar, on the.
Yeah, on the back on the.
Hold on for a sec. Hold on for a second, hold on a second. The Alderman from the 10th, you're requesting, as the sponsor, to place Board Bill 1 as amended on the perfection informal calendar.
Well, I I am, at this time, sir, there's I I
Okay.
I don't, you know, I don't know how this, you know, that's up for discussion, but I am requesting that we would put it back on to make sure we're doing this.
As as the, as as the sponsor.
As a sponsor, I'm requesting we put this on the informal to make sure we're doing this in a legal fashion.
Okay, all right. So Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill 1 as amended is on the informal calendar. As you know, the sponsor has an opportunity to do that at any point during discussion. The amendment and everything goes away, and we're gonna, again, we have a meeting Monday at which time the amendment can be reintroduced, and then we can redebate it. But all further discussions on Board Bill 1 as amended, we're, it is suspended until our next regular meeting, and when it appears on the perfection calendar at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk.
Board Bill 49 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bomber and Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of and appropriates funds under the CARES Act, the Federal Emergency Management Act, Grant Program, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Coronavirus Emer- Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS and Ryan White Grant Programs are relating to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and containing an, an emergency clause.
All the men from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill forty-nine as amended.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Uh, and I, I do have, uh, an amendment for this. I believe the. Yes, I, I understand, yes, sir. I make a motion that we, uh.
Perfect.
Perfect Board Bill forty-nine as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second. Seconded by Alderman from the sixth. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize.
Thank you, thank you. Board Bill forty-nine as amended allows us to begin addressing our residents' needs in response to the COVID hard economic hardships, uh, and as the unemployment benefits run out for most of these eighteen thousand residents at the end of July, uh, the large amount of funds will be spent on rental housing, utility assistance, assistance, pardon me. Amendment number one, uh, is what I'm putting before you. I believe you have it, uh, it's offered to change the detail of where two program funding comes from. Does not change the amount being spent on the program items. The detail of where the funds are coming from are from lines in the first two lines under DHS. Uh, one being rapid rehousing existing homeless and two, emergency shelter. Uh, it's merely a, a. And that is the amendment. It's merely, if you look at the, uh.
Uh, would you like to, would you like to make a formal motion for?
I, I move that we, uh, I move to add amendment to Board Bill number forty-nine as amended.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth, any discussion on amendment number one to Board Bill forty-nine as amended? Alderman from the sixth.
I apologize, Mr. President. I got a little ahead of myself for the second.
Yes, the other one from the sixth does have three amendments that I am in agreement with, sir.
Okay, all right, uh, any further discussion on amendment number, uh, one? No further discussion, it's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth that we adopt amendment number one. Five by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Alderman from tenth, you recognize.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Uh, I am closing on amendment number one. But I do believe, uh, if you recognize Alderman from the sixth, he does have three amendments to the progress bill also.
All right, Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Members of the Board. Um, I move to, uh, or make a motion to, um, introduce amendment two to Board Bill forty-nine as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth that we, uh, for.
Second.
Who seconded by the Alderman from the first, I think. Uh, that we adopt amendment number two. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first. We can't, still can't hear you. Oh, there he is.
I thought you, I, I, I just wanted to second, so you can go back to the sixth. I'm done. Okay.
Any further discussion on amendment number two? And for Alderman from the sixth, you recognize close on amendment number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the first that we adopt amendment number two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the sixth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we, uh, make a motion to, uh, introduce amendment three to Board Bill forty-nine as amended.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the first, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yeah, um, could the Alderman from the sixth tell us what amendment number three is?
Alderman from the, um, sixth, can you, could you cover amendment number three?
I would be happy to. So, uh, amendment three creates a new line item, um, for, uh, if you look at Exhibit A, um, underneath the, um, Department of Health and Human Services, you'll find a line item for homeless prevention program operators. And under that, we are going to add, uh, category for legal services for eviction cases. Um, we're going to fund that at two hundred and ten thousand dollars and take two hundred and ten thousand dollars um, from the contingency fund, which contains six point seven million dollars. And this will allow for, um, not only the mediation services for the, um, large number of eviction cases we know we have pending, um, but also legal services. So organizations like Catholic Charities, Legal Service of Eastern Missouri, um, and other organizations would be able to, um, apply for funding, um, to hire lawyers for the next six months to, um, help move people through the, the court system as quickly as we can. Um, it's based on a model that was successful after, uh, the two thousand and eight, um, uh, economic downturn. And, um, uh, and it so is data-driven. It would, it would fund six positions at thirty-five thousand dollars each.
Okay, thank you, Alderman.
You're welcome.
Any further, uh, discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixth, you recognize close on amendment number three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the first that we adopt amendment number three. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, or to introduce amendment four to the Board Bill forty-nine as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the first. Alderman from the sixth, could you please, um, read amendment number six?
I would be happy to, Mr. President. Uh, this would, uh, start, um, on the line that's marked contingency on Exhibit A to Board Bill forty-nine as amended. It's the last category of money. And since we are, um, adding a category including two hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're going to strike out the six point seven million dollars that's currently included. Um, subtract that two hundred and ten thousand dollars and change it to six point five million. And then if you go further to the right on the exhibit, under the CARES Act funding, um, we're going to delete the two hundred and ten thousand dollars from the five point five million, um, changing it to five point three million, um, just so everything is correct on the exhibit to this board bill.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixth, you recognize close.
I renew my motion.
The move by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the first that we adopt amendment number four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Alderman from the sixth, please proceed.
I have nothing further, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. So, uh, with that, I renew my motion to, uh, adopt, uh, perfect Board Bill number forty-nine as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the sixth that we perfect Board Bill forty-nine as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bill for perfection.
Third reading, third reading consent.
Board Bill number twelve.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the sixteen, discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Baumann?
Aye.
Alderman Ward?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Kong?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Davis, you're muted.
Mute. My stuff keep going out. Aye. Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-seven aye votes.
Aye vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from twenty-second and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossment.
Board Bill twenty-eight as amended, sponsored by Alderman Calder, Alderman Davis, Alderman Iglesias, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Howard, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Green and Alderman Martin. An ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the City of St. Louis Port Authority subject to the approval of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and authorize and authorizing and directing certain actions by the Port Authority.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill twenty-eight as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move to third reading and final pass Board Bill twenty-eight as amended.
Second.
By Alderman from the seventh, uh, entertain a second on that.
Twenty-fifth, second.
I'd like Shane.
Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alderman from the seventh, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Getting some feedback there. Um, this is the, uh, Port Authority Expansion Bill that we debated a couple of weeks back now. I believe it's been enrolled and engrossed. I'm not sure if I have that backwards. Um, but those have occurred, so we're back for third reading and final passage, just to refresh your memory. Uh, what we're doing here is expanding, uh, the, the existing Port Authority boundaries, which taken the riverfront of the city passing through a number of wards, uh, and taking in some sections of downtown, uh, to get over to the soccer stadium. Um, because one of the one percent sales taxes that is contemplated for the, uh, MLS project is a port, uh, district tax. And in order to do that, uh, we've got to get the boundaries over to the soccer stadium. Uh, I think this came up in debate, but just to be clear, that one percent tax does not apply to the whole district, just the soccer stadium site. So we're not levying an additional sales tra- tax elsewhere, uh, in the district. Uh, additionally, uh, through an amendment, we took in a, a, a portion of, I believe, the twenty-fifth ward and, uh, up maybe into some of the eleventh and everything else. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we had a pretty healthy debate on this a couple of weeks ago. Um, and it's been a long day already, but I'm here with, for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? Further discussion.
My little hand thing not working?
No, I didn't see it.
Now we can hear you.
Alderman from the third.
Uh, just one question. Uh, thank you.
Give me a second.
Excuse me. Um, so this does not encompass or touch the third ward, correct, or any boundaries of it?
That's correct. I, I, you don't have any of the riverfront currently, do you?
No, sir.
No, then it doesn't touch the third ward.
Okay, well, sounds great. I appreciate it. No further questions.
All right, Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close.
Thank you. Sorry to let my dog in. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth that we third read and final pass Board Bill number twenty-eight as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Been a request for a previous roll. I object to previous roll. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye.
Let me just make sure.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Baumann?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero?
No.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Kong?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
No.
Twenty-five aye votes and two no votes.
By a vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the seventh and third read and finally pass Board Bill number twenty-eight as amended.
That is the extent of third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill twelve and Board Bill twenty-eight as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, affix his signature here too, to the end, that these may become law. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move to adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second and Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to add my name as a co-sponsor, if that's okay?
Uh, all right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, uh, add the Alderman from twenty-second's name to, as a co-sponsor of the Resolution twenty-three.
So noted.
It's been moved by Alderman from nineteen, seconded by Alderman from twenty-second that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. First reading resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading.
Resolution twenty-two as amended, sponsored by Alderman Calder. Matters pertaining to the City Treasurer Contracting.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the, um, second reading, Resolution twenty-two as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Um, I move, uh, to adopt, uh, to final pass Resolution twenty-two as amended.
Moved by Alderman from seventh and ten second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Resolution twenty-two as amended, uh, was passed unanimously by the Streets Committee yesterday. Um, and it seeks to, uh, to investigate and authorize subpoena powers for the Streets Committee, um, to look into the issues regarding the. Um, and it seeks to, uh, to investigate and authorize subpoena powers for the Streets Committee, um, to look into the issues regarding the, the contracting processes in the Treasurer's Office and, and frankly, the contract with Hudson, uh, and Associates regarding the, uh, the recent contract to outsource parking operations. Um, I'm not saying through this that I think that that entity, Hudson, is not qualified to do the job that they have been selected, I guess, by the Treasurer to do. The issue here is, there's a lot of question about the validity of this contract, how it was awarded. Um, the city, the c- city counselor has said, waited, essentially saying this is not even a valid agreement. Um, so what we're seeking to do here is simply to look into that RFP process, how it occurred, uh, and, and the subpoena power will give us the authority to, if necessary, uh, compel the production of documents and testimony. Uh, I fully anticipate, um, that, you know, the Treasurer and her staff will likely give over whatever we ask for. I mean, they're against the government body, they're public records anyway. Um, you know, reason we, we need subpoena power is, we have no authority to compel private parties or third parties uh, to, to come before us or to provide any documents. Uh, it's my intention and the committee's intention to, at first, you know, simply ask for the things we're requesting. Uh, and we're compiling the list of things we'd like from both Hudson, uh, maybe some of its employees and contractors, and from the Treasurer's Office, and we'll simply ask for them, uh, and engage in a back and forth on that. You know, s- lobbying subpoenas is always a last resort. Um, I know you've heard from, many of you have heard from me, many of you have heard from the Treasurer on this thing. Uh, I do think this is an important part of our oversight power. I got a call coming in. Uh, it's an important part of our, our powers as legislators to, to investigate at times. Uh, the Charter authorizes our standing committees to investigate, and that's what we're seeking to do here. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, at this time, but I would just warn it, you know, I probably don't have all the answers because what we're simply asking to do is to start this investigation, uh, which is what this resolution is seeking. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, could I inquire of the Alderman from the seventh, please?
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield a question to the Alderwoman from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you so much, Alderman, for taking a question. I, I'm just curious, I, I did tune into the Streets Committee hearing, um, it wasn't, I, I was just sitting back to listen, but I, was the, was the Treasurer or any owner of her staff invited to, to testify yesterday, or the other day when this bill came, or this resolution came through?
No, I mean, we were, this is, all this is doing is authorizing the investigation. I know the Treasurer had asked if she could testify and that request was denied by the Chair. Um, you know, she's repeatedly said she doesn't believe this is necessary, um, which, that's fine, that's her and her office's opinion. Ultimately, it's not up to, you know, various executive offices, including the Treasurer, to decide what we as Aldermen think is necessary, uh, to exercise our investigatory powers to undertake. Uh, as I've explained to both the Treasurer and her Chief of Staff, you know, they'll have ample opportunity to be heard, uh, down the road when we, you know, when we do have some public testimony on the substance of our investigation.
Okay, um, and how many times over the course of your time down here at the Board of Aldermen has a subpoena been authorized and used?
Um, I don't know. I know the Streets Department was previously given subpoena power maybe a year or two ago. I don't know if any subpoenas resulted from that, but it has been done before.
Okay, okay, I don't have any other questions. Um, I, I just, I am concerned about this resolution, not because I think that there um, is anything wrong with granting authority given to us by the Charter to, to compel testimony. My concern is that we did not, or the, the Streets Committee did not just ask for those documents first, and we've instead moved to subpoena, um, to subpoena power, right? This is, this isn't saying that this subpoena power is going to be, um, utilized necessarily, but that instead of taking a week to have a hearing to go ahead and have these, these documents produced and have this conversation in public, we're instead moving to, uh, subpoena power first, and I think that that's just, um, it's a bit disingenuous, I think. Um, and I, uh, I would say that I, I also have significant concerns about, um, a, a person who is campaigning for the office, that they're, um, they're working so hard to, um, I get, I, there, there's just, there's a lot coming out the Treasurer's Office right now from someone who is currently a candidate for Treasurer. Um, and even though I know that, um, Alderman Boyd is not the sponsor of this resolution, I, I mean, it would have been a significant conflict of interest for, um, the Alder, for the Chairman of the Streets Committee to be the sponsor of this resolution. Um, I just, I want to highlight that I think it's a problem. Um, and so I'm going to be voting no today because I think that there was ample time to simply request these documents and request the appearance of all of these parties, uh, before we move to subpoena power. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, I just want to first state that a few weeks ago, we had before us, uh, when you, uh, maybe it's been a little longer than a few weeks ago, you started the Committee for Covoy, and, um, I suggested that we put a subpoena power in it, and the sponsor of this, uh, resolution expressed dismay that we would do, we would have subpoena power. As practicing attorneys, and I was practicing way before he, uh, probably was in college, I've been practicing in and out for thirty years. Um, uh, subpoenas are pretty standard, you can get them pretty much, so they don't put any alarm to me for, uh, you to have subpoena power. But when you express an, um, uh, that you don't believe that we should do it for certain people, but others, that's when I start to not, uh, that I have problems with it, because I think we're, uh, not being fair. Um, specifically, Dr. Echols, who's part of this whole Covoy thing, has lied under oath on numerous occasions. I got a lot more about him to come now. So I'm gonna come right back with the subpoena power for Dr. Echols, and I'm not running for office, and I'm not seeking anything. And so, um, I know that the Alderman from the seventh will join in wholeheartedly, because what it appears to me, I want to echo what the Alderwoman said from the eighth, that time instants. In Congress, they actually have some rules and laws about when you can start to do these kind of things, because, um, uh, because after a while, it, it's very political. It does not look like you're doing an, uh, an investigation. It looks like you're doing politics for somebody else. And of course, the Chairman of, uh, Streets wouldn't sponsor it, uh, because he can sit back and let his vice chair do it. It is not a good time to be doing this. Um, and, um, you, to use your own words, have you asked them to just do it? That's what you expressed, Alderman from the seven, when, oh, well, people can just, uh, come before, and then if they don't produce, then we would do it. Um, and then to say, we're gonna do this full investigation, we're not gonna let her talk at all, we're not gonna let her staff talk. Okay, and that's the way you try cases. Um, but, um, I've been, uh, unfortunately, on many of the chain emails between the Alderman from the twenty-second and the Treasurer, and I finally just said, please take me off of these things. Um, to see how much information has been going back and forth, back and forth, and the differences of what they believe, what one person says versus the other. Um, and again, I don't have any real, uh, objections to subpoenas, and even having them prepared, because that is what you do in court all the time. I have an objection to the timing of this, and that there's an election, and that you can smear people's name by just doing, um, um, investigations now, and then you come up with nothing. And, um, so none of you all served with this person, and I didn't either, but I came right after it. Uh, we used to have a president, before Tom Villa, there was a President, Mr. Zitch, President Zitch. And he was indicted with, uh, several people, Leroy Tyus was one of them, Jean Slay was another, so when Francis Slay, when I, when I came down as the twenty-fourth Alderwoman, Francis Slay sits where the sixteenth Ward Alderman sits now. And, um, so they all went all the way up to Supreme Court, and I was just getting out of law school, and I was so embarrassed that the Tyus name, every, every week was across the pages of, uh, the post-dispatch, uh, and this was the investigation, so this is how long ago, it was about the Charter. We were bringing Charter cable into the city. And Sorkis Webby actually was a member of the Board of Aldermen. He actually went to jail, his dad died. But the long, of the short is that it took years and years and years. They found on a local level Jean, uh, Slay and Leroy Tyus were found guilty, the Supreme Court overturned it. Zitch fought for years and years and years, then he got found not guilty. And so he said, where do I go back, where do I go to get my name back? And I always remembered that as a new young Alderperson, because, uh, following in that, there was many times that my name was smeared and lied about, and then, uh, years later, people said, ooh, Ms. Tyus, you, you sure did tell the truth about that. So to do this right before an election, to me, is a very, is very bad timing, and it is questionable. And, um, I, I don't understand why this is coming up now. Um, and perhaps, uh, if the Alderman from the seventh wants to close, because I don't even want him to yield, um, he can tell me that. Um, but I do still say that I like that ideal in Congress, that at a time, they prevent you from doing these kind of things, so that it will not get into politics, and that it is a real, um, investigation. I believe in good government, and I believe that if there's something wrong, wherever it is, then let it come out. But don't wait until months before an election, um, to do these kind of things. And although we may, we don't have that quote-unquote rule, I will remind you as the Rules Chairman, where things are silent, we do go to Congress for our rules. And so perhaps before you want to take this any further, you might want to look at the congressional rules about when you do investigations, and maybe put this away and do it at a different time. I don't think that you're gonna listen to me, but when I come back here, I will bring, when we come back next time, I will bring the congressional rules. And they prohibit this kind of thing in the middle of a election, because I don't care, the greatest person probably cannot, um, resist perhaps doing politics during this time. And right now, with the, uh, person number forty-five slash number three that we have in office, um, and watching all the things that he has done, I don't think that we want to do this sort of thing, and I will not be supporting this, not because I don't believe in subpoenas and investigation, because I think this is, uh, ill-timed and a smacks of polit- politics, not good government.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Would the, uh, Alderman from the seventh yield, please?
Alderman from the seventh, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just one quick question. Uh, is there any reason that you're doing this, uh, before, uh, simply just asking for the documents and seeing if they're produced? It, it seems a bit putting the cart before the horse to me, but you, you, you may have a, a totally valid reason, so I'm just, uh, inquiring that.
No, very good question, Alderman. Um, you know, reason we're doing this now, one, the, the timing of this, this contract, this purported contract with Hudson was executed, um, sometime, I guess, in April, and this has all come up really in the last month in the Streets Committee. Um, and reason I'm requesting, you know, the subpoena power now, again, I have no doubt, I, I suspect the Treasurer and her staff will continue to cooperate and give us anything we ask for, but we have no way to compel documents or testimony from private parties, uh, without some sort of subpoena authority. And no, I have not asked, um, any third parties for documents yet, um, and, and, and I suspect we will, and when we do so, you know, it won't be under subpoena at first, but that will be, you know, if you don't give it over, we're gonna subpoena it. Uh, and we're gonna be on break until September, and I do intend on pursuing this in the coming months. Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Anything further, Alderman from twenty-fourth?
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I don't have a, a question for the sponsor, but I just have a comment. Um, this has become an issue, and so, I mean, I, I wouldn't like for certain members of our body to sit here and try to bamboozle, uh, the public when it comes to who's advocating for who, who typically votes with who, and what the real agenda is. But I will say this, as a member of this body, um, when things came out, some in the media, uh, which could cause less about if it's an election cycle or not, uh, trust me, I, my entire family has been ostracized in the media. We had a whole election strip from us during the election cycle, so I, I don't really, uh, care about the, the media part of it and the commentary part of it, what, when, and when you shouldn't do what, but when you hold an official capacity, if there are questions, uh, about some stuff that doesn't particularly look right, then I feel that it's your duty and it's your job to defend what's going on. Uh, I will admit, the Treasurer's Office reached out to me, uh, regarding this, and my comments were to that member of whomever was that, if you haven't done anything wrong, present the documentation and defend yourself, but you can't be in a space to where, especially when you're transparent, and, and that's what you've always stumped on, being transparent, you can't be in a position to where you feel is beneath you to come before, uh, our body. And just answer the question, uh, we, we can, every member of this board can admit that it did not look right, or it didn't look as if things were handled properly how they should have been. So I'm not saying that it was some something that wa- wasn't right about it, but it just, it didn't look right. And so when you have that situation, I know if it were me, I would come before and try to explain my actions and try to defend. We did receive some documentation and stuff from, um, the Treasurer's Office, but I just want us to be, uh, aboveboard and transparent, and just be about the, the business of the taxpayers and the business of the city. I mean, it, I don't feel there's anything wrong with this, um, bill or resolution or whatever. I feel that any of us can be, um, under scrutiny, and I, you know, it, it probably is unfortunate that it is an election cycle, but when you are elected and, and the public wants answers, you, you have to give it to them, and if you haven't done anything wrong, then you use that as a means to further campaign. But, uh, I, I'll just say that I'm gonna support this, and I would encourage everyone else to support it too, because we simply are looking for the truth, and if something wasn't done right, I think it, we, it needs to be addressed, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, you know, I, I also am very mixed over this. Um, you know, I, I agree with the Alderwoman from the fifth ward, that it is our duty to, uh, you know, ensure that we're investigating issues that, uh, cause us pause or concern. Um, one hundred percent, I, I am in alignment on that. Um, where I have concerns, though, is is in fact, the committee that is, uh, doing this. You know, we've got a, a litigation, if I'm not mistaken, that's still pending, um, between the Chair of the Committee and the Treasurer's Office. Um, there's obviously the campaign happening in the background, uh, of this, uh, potential, or, you know, soon to be, you know, happening investigation. Um, so I, I just, the, it's not necessarily that there is a conflict that exists, but it's the appearance that a conflict could exist, um, with respect to this investigation. So I, I would fully support, um, you know, this resolution if it were ways and means, because it is a budgetary concern or legislation, um, as it was a contract, uh, you know, at, at stake that, that we're discussing and investigating at this point. Um, you know, I think that there's other committees that can do that work, um, that would probably be a more appropriate committee, given the potential or perception of conflict with the, the Streets Committee at this point. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question was essentially the question that Brett, uh, Alderman from the twenty-fourth asked, uh, so I lowered my hand, I apologize if still appear to be up.
Okay.
Wanted to make sure that, uh, we were putting in a request, but I think that the Alderman from the seventh brought up an excellent point about, uh, compelling outside entities, um, and the need for that.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. Mr. President, members of the board, as I said, I don't have problems with subpoenas, but, uh, I've had many, many hearings, been here for, this is eight, seventeen here, um, and, uh, most times you do not have to compel outside interests. When you ask them, they produce it. Um, and so if the concern is, oh, it's gonna be over the summer or whatever, then that to me speaks to what I said, that it's about the timing before the election is the concern. Other than that, it doesn't make a difference, because if it's an illegal contract, it can be revoked. Um, and, um, I would wonder if the Alderman from the twenty-second would yield.
Alderman from the twenty-second, will you yield a question to the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Mr., um, Alderman, um, have you all, uh, received documents from the Treasurer's Office on this issue before?
We've seen, we have received some documents.
Some. Do you feel like that there are some documents that you are not in possession of?
I'm not sure at this time.
Okay, have you enumerated to the Treasurer exactly which documents you want?
I have not. It's not my resolution.
I, I know, but you all have been looking at this, um, from the, the whole committee, and you are the Chair, so have, has, has, they're been sent to the Treasurer, to your knowledge, on enumeration of the documents that you want from her?
There has been a request for some documents. There has been a request for some documents, and I have personally made the request, and I have received some documents.
Did you not receive all of the documents that were requested?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so usually when I make a request, and, and so I have a checklist, this is what I want, do you have this, blah, 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 and then I will know, so you're telling me you requested it, is it that you just don't remember if you got all the documents, or if, or that you're not sure that she provided all the documents?
I'm not sure if there are other documents that need to be requested, Alderman.
Okay, and so, all right, thank you. So you, as far as you're concerned, though, my question is that you're not sure that what you requested from the treasurer was fulfilled, is that your testimony, is that your response?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, is the, is the Alderman from the Seventh would yield?
Alderman from the Seventh, will you yield the question to the Alderman from the First? Alderman from the First, please proceed.
Okay, and I heard you say that you didn't know if people would respond or not, and again, I want to tell you that if you usually, if they get requests from the Board of Aldermen, most times they will, I found the people who don't respond the most are the people who work within the city government, that work for the mayors, those are the people, in fact, I requested something, and I just got it with a response. Even though I have a right to have it as the chair of a committee, I requested it in February from BPS, and I just got it yesterday or the day before, from Rich Bradley saying, Stephen Conway told him he had to, which I had already told him the charter law, and where he could go to talk to the city counselor to, to let him know that I had a right. So my problems have never been from outside this city, it has been from within the city, from the mayors trying to hide things from us, so we would not have information. And that started from the time I got down here, because the former Alderman of the 21st Ward, Antonio French, used to be so frustrated at trying to get things, and then they wouldn't give it to him, and then I would have to show him how he could get it. So have you, did you say you have requested anything from the Hudson group?
No, I have not at this time.
And have you requested anything from the treasurer that was not provided?
I have not, no, and I, I plan to request things from the treasurer, but I have not yet, I mean, I didn't want to get ahead of my skis and, you know, start asking for documents until we had this discussion as both the committee and as a full board.
Okay, and so my question is, why wouldn't you just ask her for them?
We're gonna ask her for it.
But why wouldn't you ask her for, without a subpoena?
Well, because, Alderman, I, I suspect we're gonna need documents from the treasurer and from, you know, non-government parties.
You know what I'm gonna do for you? This is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask her, because I can as the chair, so I'm gonna help you out a little bit, I'm gonna ask her and Hudson Group to give me all the documents. I guarantee you I'll have them before you have, and you don't need a subpoena. So I'll just do that for you, because I'm able to do that, and I, I bet you I can have them in my hand in no time, flaps, okay? So that's what I'm saying about smearing people's names, if you have not have asked her, then, then I have a question, especially since you were expressing such concern about having the Covoy Committee, which I wasn't the chair, have subpoena power, okay? So I'm gonna make sure I get them for you, and I guarantee you there'll be all the documents that you need. Thank you, I have no further questions, and I will, I request a roll call.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the Seventh, you recognize the close on the second reading of Resolution 22 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, I just want to briefly just address what the Alderman from the First mentioned about the COVID Committee, and yeah, I did express some reservations about granting the standing committee subpoena power when we weren't exactly sure, I guess, why we were doing that. If the committee has a investigation it wants to undertake, I'll support, you know, giving the committee, of which I serve, on subpoena power. Second, responding just briefly to the Alderman from the Eighth, you know, who basically, I guess, accused me of playing politics for the Alderman from the 22nd, you know, I've consistently in my time down here taken an interest in the parking division in the treasurer's office. As the Alderman of the Seventh Ward, the vast majority of the parking garages controlled by the city, lots controlled by the city, and parking meters of the city are in my district. So it's something I've consistently taken an interest in, and I've been critical of, of the basically funding mechanisms and how money flows from the treasurer's office to the general fund, and I know there's state laws governing that. So I don't think this is inconsistent with positions that have taken in the past. I'd again remind the board, this came unanimously out of Streets, and it is something that is prerogative of, of the Streets Committee. I think we are certainly equipped with handling this investigation. And to the Alderman to the 25th's point, you know, the, the parking division budget is, comes to the Streets Committee on an annual basis, not to Ways and Means. So I think we're capable of doing this, I think we're gonna do it efficiently and respectfully, as I've indicated to the treasurer and her chief of staff, you know, they'll be given an opportunity to testify at mutually convenient dates, we'll certainly ask them for documents, I'll be asking third parties for documents, which is really the, the main reason we need this subpoena power, and this is gonna take a while, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. So I would appreciate your favorable consideration and a vote to final pass Resolution 22 as amended, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the Seventh, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt Resolution Number 22 as amended, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Yes.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Igasiya? Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Carol emailed in the link.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Ty?
No.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cole?
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Igasiya?
No.
Alderman Davis? Seventeen aye votes and nine no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the Seventh, and adopted Resolution 22 as amended.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Ms. Linus, I'm finished business.
We have none.
Announcement.
The following meetings will be, will be held via webinar, Monday, June 29th, full board meeting, 11:00 a.m. Rules will have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 30th, full board meeting at 11:00 a.m. Rules, 1:00 p.m. Wednesday, July 1st, Rules will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, July 2nd, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. And Friday, July 3rd, the office will be closed in honor of the Fourth of July.
All right. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the First.
Mr. President, members of the board, I just wanted to remind the full board that we may have to change those times a little bit, depending on what's going on. So I'm gonna get with the clerk, and we may push it back a half an hour, an hour for the Rules Committee for Monday and Tuesday.
All right, thank you, Alderman, thank you for your consideration, because they, just so you guys know, the staff, you know, and, and the clerk and the assistant clerk, they're working sometimes seven, eight o'clock at night to get everything ready for the next day, and oftentimes through the weekends also, so this has been a real toll on them, and I'm thankful that they continue to make sure everything is, everything's set up and ready to go for us. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make an announcement that this evening, our Downtown Dutchtown group is hosting a drive-in movie night in Dutchtown. It's taking place at the headquarters for Habitat for Humanity on their parking lot at 3030 South Grand, which is right at the intersection of Grand and Chippewa. It starts at 7:30 this evening, if anyone wants to join. Should be a good time, they're playing Independence Day, if I remember correctly, so pretty timely, given next week is the holiday, but anyways, everyone is welcome to come, come on down to Dutchtown.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further, Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to extend a celebratory congratulations on the birthdays of our two colleagues from the 23rd and the sixth celebrated birthday yesterday.
Oh, congratulations, Alderman from the 23rd and Alderman from the sixth. Happy birthday. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Going once, going twice, Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, all members are present.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until Monday, June 29th at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
Second.
Move on from 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the sixth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
We stand, we stand adjourned.